You didn't hear the news before you got here.
Oh, my goodness.
We're ready to go.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and begin our work session. The way we left off the other night was we were trying to walk through some concepts. I know Brad, you had made some notes as well. I've had some notes. You guys challenged me to try to write some things. And so I've taken a crack at a couple of them. I'm trying to remember where I was at. I think one of the areas, Cindy, that we were talking about was in the new language under the groundwater situation.
What page?
On the draft, it's on page fifteen.
The number on the bottom or on your actual?
I'm on the draft document.
What chapter?
Three, natural resources, three.
Four is natural resources.
Goal one. Where you guys.
For one conserve and manage groundwater, that section?
Right about that. That was the new language that was added. Cindy that addressed that. I have a couple suggestions about maybe how that could be written. So in the opening paragraph under six, paragraph six, and it ends with without sufficient data, it is not possible to determine the impacts both positive and negative. See where I'm at? I have an idea of a sentence that says residential and commercial developments are required to determine and monitor impacts to both deep water aquifers and shallow groundwater sources for both quality and quantity. Was one of the sentences I was thinking about adding there.
Say that again.
Residential and commercial developments are required to determine and monitor impacts to both deep water aquifers and shallow groundwater sources for both quantity and quality.
So what are you proposing that someone does there? What is, in your minds, what that's requiring someone do?
Well, what I'm trying to do is answer the question that Cindy has posed up in the last sentence about without sufficient data, it's not possible to determine positive or negative impacts.
This is the background.
I know.
And then in the goal or objective, you would bring those out.
Okay, so maybe what what I'm trying to get at is that when developments come in, they should be required to actually determine what the impacts are going to be. And to say, well, we just don't know, so there is nothing to happen. I think there should be some onerous put on the development to say, well, if we're going to drill this new five hundred foot deep well based on what, you know, the experts' studies are, what impact is that going to have?
So isn't that why we go through our agencies? Isn't that why a project is sent to an agency for that comp?
Yeah, the agencies are. The agencies are not going to determine that kind of an impact. That's where we.
That's their job, right? They're supposed to.
Not necessarily. They're not going to be determining or looking at the impacts. DEQ is not going to look at groundwater.
So who is?
Nobody.
So.
But when Tamarack drilled their wells, they had to get permitted.
Right.
To do so through DEQ.
For municipal water?
For their mu- yes, they have municipal water system there.
But I think they also did studies about potential impact. I mean, back in those days, they had, there's very few deep water wells in the county. The point where I'm trying to go with it is we just keep doing things, putting more wells in, and there's no evaluation about impacts to quantity and quality.
Does the data exist to do it?
It does not. And that's the very point for requiring a development to actually study and figure out what impact they're going to create. I agree that there's not data out there where they're limited. The point is, we need to start putting the responsibility to answer some of these questions on the developments and the people that are causing the impacts. And we should figure out what the impacts are. Just like we would require somebody to do a traffic study.
I don't disagree. I think we have the data for the traffic studies, but I don't know that we have the data for the groundwater. Not sure we have it for the deep water aquifers either. So if we require that, I'm sure you're thinking of some minimum size, right? A one lot subdivision probably doesn't have to.
No.
Do it if you're going to put in.
Well, if they, if they get a, if they have a well, any domestic well requires a water right. And that water right is priority dates and whatnot. There's certain protections on that. But when you start creating a like a huge number of wells, what effect is that going to have? If you, if you say we're going to have two hundred wells, individual wells on this chunk of ground, what effect is that going to have? Somebody needs to answer that question before we say, yeah, that's okay to do that.
So this chapter sets it up to create a goal to obtain sufficient data, groundwater data.
Okay.
Goal. That's what we're trying to do is obtain that data.
What you're saying, then, to capture what you're saying, under like goal one of the objectives is where something would be placed to require that.
Yes.
And that's fine. It doesn't have to be.
That's just identifying that we have a need. And then the goals. You have a set of tasks.
Okay. So if we could incorporate it somewhere to provide some data.
That's what we have done.
I think that's where we have to lean on Idaho Department of Water Resources and IDQ. So I think.
So one of the things lacking up here, and I attend a lot of different meetings on this, is we don't have enough wells with monitoring in them to create an analysis of our basins. So if you look at objective one, C, promote a well monitoring system through private and public partners, then write a code that says for subdivisions that you have to have moni- you have to put in at least one monitoring well.
And I think you can do that with a one word change and say, instead of promote, require.
Okay. Everybody agree with that one?
I missed that. Say that again.
Just under that one C, instead of promoting it, you could require. Because then we would start to get data from residential wells, deep wells, to find out what's happening to our aquifer, what kind of quality effects are happening.
And then one person doesn't have to bear the entire cost of.
Right.
Right.
You're spreading. I like that approach because I'm concerned with where you would set a separation of who has to do it and who doesn't. Because you can have just as much an effect with a thousand individual wells as one large subdivision.
Right. And I think to Cindy's point, that requirement and where we set that threshold, that can be borne out in the ordinances. But in a comp plan, it basically says, yeah, we're going to do this.
This is the direction we're going.
How we're going to do it can be found in the ordinance.
Yes, so that.
Makes sense to me.
The change I made was require a well monitoring system, then I'm going to keep track of code changes that need to implement that.
In the two statements, if they go up a little bit under the B and C, as it's currently proposed, it says Valley County has no elevated nitrate levels and it is not designated as a high priority nitrate area. I'm going to read this statement and see if you, if it sounds okay. While Valley County currently has no listed high priority nitrate areas, comma, it shall be the responsibility of new developments to determine and monitor its impacts. And I think that goes along with what we're just talking about. Because we don't know that there isn't going to be high nitrate areas.
But those are designated by DEQ. Those are an official designation, not something we are going to do. There are maps. I tried to get to it last time, but I couldn't. The state puts out that shows where high priority nitrate areas are.
Right, we just went through this on one application.
Okay, geographic location identified by a government agency as having elevated levels of nitrate in groundwater posing a health risk and requiring management strategies. So they have not done that for Valley County.
DEQ hasn't done that.
They have not designated Valley County as a high nitrate priority area. If they did, Central District Health would require the.
The monitoring.
The monitoring.
Have they? So they haven't done much monitoring yet?
They have not designated this as a high nitrate area.
There's thirty five high nitrate priority areas throughout the state of Idaho. Valley County is not listed on this. They're reevaluated every two years by DEQ using statewide groundwater quality monitoring. Even outside. Yeah.
So I think maybe let that go under the one we just changed under one C. We talked about requiring.
Let's back up to B because I do hear what you're saying. Let's take out the first sentence, the Valley County has no elevated nitrate levels. Let's say Valley County is not currently designated as a high priority.
I think that's better.
Okay, so, yeah, so the first part of that sentence, I had, while Valley County or Valley County currently.
Valley County is not currently designated.
All right, I can go with that. Because I think you're, we're capturing the intent on our first change in C. Because I think we've got this in data in the county. And that monitoring data is going to be for both quantity and quality.
So I think what's showing up in the water bodies is the phosphorus.
That's kind of my next, that's under C. So under C, Valley County does, it's currently written, it says Valley County does not have an elevated.
No, it says does have.
Does have an elevated level of background phosphorus and is concerned with practices that put phosphorus into the naturally occurring environment.
Wait, where's that?
C, right above goal one, six C.
Oh, six, okay.
Background, okay. So let me read this and see, see how this sounds to you. Lake Cascade's water quality continues to decline, which we know is true. Reducing elevated phosphorus levels are key to achieving improvements. Because Valley County has a high background, has high background levels of naturally occurring phosphorus, it is vital that significant efforts be made to address human activity or whatever you want to call it, a link to phosphorus loading, including agricultural, residential, and commercial activity.
And that's, that should go down in our goals. We need to identify that we have this background. And then we'll put it in our goals.
Okay. That's fine.
And I do have these. The thing that I read into that or heard when I said that is you were specific to Lake Cascade.
Exactly.
I think we have, we want to say Valley County waterways or.
And bodies of water.
Yeah.
Because of BPAD, like to.
BPAD, and I think they're seeing, starting to see it in upper Payette as well.
Yeah.
My other comment on water quality is there's the chemical just left my mind, but I think it was cyanide that they were seeing was level five in Payette. That's where they're seeing it in fish. And we actually were level five on the MDA levels, MLDA, on the load levels. And so do we want to haul out all the areas where we're level five? Or, because it feels like we're missing that.
Instead of just phosphorus.
Just phosphorus. I'm wondering if you want to add other things where we have been called into where we're exceeding the.
So like put a D here.
Good. Cindy, I'm going to give it as.
Could be D or just could be added to anything that is a high priority.
So that's some of the language, and you might be able to work with that.
I think phosphorus is the big loud one because of the cyanide blooms or.
Cyanide.
Cyanobacteria.
We could say other chemicals that are of concern are cyanide.
And we'd have to look at the max, where we're exceeding the.
Including but not limited to phosphorus and cyanide.
Cyanide, yeah. I think those were the two that came up on that last report that were.
Cyanide.
Very concerning.
Did you have another one besides cyanide?
I'd, I'd have to go look at what the is DEQ study came back with where we had elevated levels. I think there were, I want to say there were three that we were level fours and fives on.
And phosphorus was on that list.
Phosphorus was on the list.
So you will look at that list, Brad will look at this list, and you will get that too.
Okay, that's fine.
And I mean, at the public hearing, you can always change it too or massage it.
Yeah. I, that just, I don't want us to only focus on phosphorus if we have another gremlin out there.
A gremlin? And then.
Yeah, and I mean, you look at those levels and you look at our fires, you look at the erosion. You know, a lot of this is, in my opinion.
Some of it's natural, some of it's induced. Some of it, they said, was just the fish are living longer, so it's a longer time to collect the lead in their system.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Well, you're fine. Get that accomplished.
Okay. So that's the concept. Putting in an objective is fine, but I think we need to get data, this whole section, get data, identify what they are, and the ordinance, if there's mitigation that needs to happen, that we need to mitigate it. That's the, that's the concern I have.
Code change coming out of all of this is require a well monitoring systems.
I think where we spent a bulk of our time at the, our late night meeting the other night was on this concept of land use. I don't want to get bogged down in that again today, but I've, this is where it gets really challenging to write something.
So where are we going now?
Well, I don't know, because it shows up in four chapters in our, our comp plan. And the first occurrence of it is in this chapter four about land use and, you know, preserving water quality resources and central sewer, central sewer and water services, that whole concept and where development happens. But it probably appropriately fits in chapter thirteen the best under goal one.
Scrolling, scrolling. Land use, chapter thirteen, page eighty-five.
Thank you.
Up the PDF.
Up the PDF. Page sixty-seven, page sixty-seven. And you want this under goal one?
I'm with Carrie. It was the latest one that they emailed to us.
Came out.
I need to get the goal one.
Goal one is actually page seventy-nine of the document, page ninety-seven.
The goal one is retain the rural atmosphere of Valley County by protecting its natural beauty and open characteristics and preserving its historic and scenic beauty.
So I wrote a couple of things down. Let me read them. Cindy, you have one of these, I think, in front of you. And it's, I think I'm, I don't know if it's in the background section of goal one or the, where it would go, but accommodating future residential growth, existing agricultural industries and desirable open spaces while preserving the rural agricultural atmosphere. And I've got some of those backwards. While preserving rural ag atmosphere, natural resources are high priorities of this plan. You know, so what I'm trying to say is, yes, we're going to have growth. We're going to continue to have ag, we're going to continue to have open spaces and other industries. We can do all those things. But we've got to make sure that they are high priorities to maintain. Successful attainment of these competing interests relies on smart long-term planning and balancing the finite supply of real property governed by this plan. Is the intent of this plan, or sorry, the intent of this plan that higher density residential developments and affordable housing be located within city limits or impact areas that are serviced by central sewer and water services. To me, that's kind of where I'm trying to get to, is instead of having this patchwork of development that starts to clutter up the county, can we do something in our ordinances that encourages, okay, by requiring central sewer water services in, near, or adjacent to existing services? Not saying that they can't develop something outside of the area, but if you're going to develop it outside of or a distance from, you're on the hook for paying for the infrastructure to get there.
So I've thought about this a lot. Where I see that becoming a problem is that it's not ever going to be affordable, so it's actually going to do the opposite. So any developer is going to go, I need to buy more rural because I'm not going to be able to fund this infrastructure. And so I actually think, I understand the intent, but I think if that was something we've required, I think it could do the opposite.
Require them to have central sewer and water?
Right.
But doesn't that run contrary to the rest of our comprehensive plan?
Well, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying is I think that if, if we require that, it's going to do the opposite of what we're trying to accomplish, which is clustering into, you know, cities, expanding off of that. I think the expense could am I not making sense?
The expense, the expense for who?
You're making it.
For the developer.
Unattainable for development to happen in rural areas if you're requiring them to hook up to sewer.
Well, I, I mean, rural, you're not going to be able to. So if we're requiring that near the cities, say you buy forty acres right outside Donley and you have to tie in, that's the expense of that. It's never going to pencil. And so those developers are likely going, if that's, if they want to develop in Valley County, it's going to push them out to where they don't have to tie in to the infrastructure. So I think it could create the opposite of what we're actually trying for.
Create a no man's land.
Right.
Just far enough away to be serviceable but horribly expensive. So you go one more where it won't pencil.
Right.
Where you're not going to be required to tie into central services, which then starts the exact opposite of what you're trying to achieve.
Right. And I think that, and I don't know what the answer is for that, but I think there, our, our infrastructure is so behind. That's why the expense is so great. And so how do we offset that to encourage growth from a city outward?
I think you just hit on a very key point about saying that our infrastructure is very far behind. It's because we've had decades of not planning and not building infrastructure. And so do we continue doing what we're doing?
It's not entirely true. My calls was mismanagement and lawsuits. So they're paying lawsuits instead of correcting the infrastructure.
Those were, those were factors that caused it to fall behind. But the end result is the same, is the infrastructure is still lacking. And that, you can apply the same concept to roads, sewer, water, other types of services. So what I'm trying to get at is if we continue down the path we're going and saying, you know, you can, you can build as many lots as you want out in whatever part of the county and not have central sewer and water or not adequately pay for roads or whatever it is, where are we, where are we going with this whole concept? Because isn't part of our goal to protect water quality in the lake and stay ahead of infrastructure? I mean, that's called out in our comp plan. And what about retaining the rural atmosphere of Valley County? And what about balancing agricultural as a viable option? Because if we continue down that path, we should just change the comp plan now and say agricultural is something we're going to sacrifice for residential development.
I think there's, what's running through my head here is we say what we want in the comp plan and under goals, goal one, it has promote development near existing infrastructure. That is what our comp plan, what we want, what we desire, what we're planning towards. And that makes sense to me in the comp plan. The next steps of how we do that are what I think everyone is struggling with. How, how do we get ahead of that?
How, how do we get ahead of that from, and you have to have a pretty good set of supporting ordinances that require either however you want to phrase it, pay your way, don't, don't put the infrastructure on the people who are here, how do you put the infrastructure costs on the people who are coming, right? Or the people who are building. And that's what it seems like every municipality I've read about is struggling with. How do they get ahead of that curve? And
And what percentage is everyone responsible for?
Yeah, and, and how do you allocate those costs? So where does that, I think we're stating well where our objectives are, our goals are. We want to maintain, you just said, maintain the quality of Lake Cascade and Payette Lake and maintain the, the filling of living that we have here in Valley County. That's, that's our, that's our objective, that's what we want to do as a planning commission. The goal then is how do we, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying about promote these infrastructures, promote the infrastructures. The challenge is how do we physically get the infrastructure to be ahead of the development? So you have, I think City of Cascade doesn't have any attachments left, or they had literally none left. For like sewer capacity? Yeah, sewer capacity, or I don't know if it was sewer or water, or which one it was necessarily, but the utilities weren't there, it was water. And, and you know, McColl's way behind on sewer and they've got this
And water.
Huge, huge development that they want to put in, well, they don't have the capacity to do it. So how, how are you gonna pay for that? And do you build it just for the subdivision that's going in? Or do you build it for the next two or three? Because that's where you get the economies of scale as you're putting them in and you're, you're prepared. And that's what I think every city that I've ran into struggles with, and that's where you, if you don't have a, a ordinances and a, a method in your, in your building permits and those things, that those places are paying a fair share of that forward cost, then it's gonna come back to the tax base of the people who are here to pay for that.
If you go to page fifty-nine of it's under public facilities, utilities and services. Goal one is to consider a capital improvement program, development agreements or impact fees. And then the first objective is prevent the effect new growth has on the cost of services so that it does not drive up the cost for services to the point where they cause hardship for Valley County citizens by promoting local improvements, local improvement districts, community infrastructure districts. It goes into development agreements, they've done impact fees for fire. And all those fees have to come in, in with a building permit. Right now, we're doing the development agreements and we need to get better language on that in our ordinance. Write that down before I forget.
No, it's fine.
But there has to be a nexus and there has to be a proportional share. You can't have them pay for anything beyond what their proportional share.
And that's, that's where we never, by, by law, we never get ahead.
In Idaho.
Yeah.
Follow everything with, in Idaho. If they changed that at the legislation.
Yeah.
Then
But don't you think we still, we have the ability to do adequate impact fees today? And you can create the nexus. What, what I'm getting at is I, I don't believe that the impact fees that are being paid are nearly significant enough to pay for the impacts. The fire ones that was, we approved and the county approved here fifteen months ago or so are a step in the right direction. I think it's, what is it, send a fifteen hundred dollars?
Oh, it ranges from fifteen to three thousand, I think, I'm not sure. They collected at the building department.
That's for any, what is that?
Any, for any new residential unit.
On the building permit level, is that correct? But are the, and the developer paying a impact fee?
There isn't an impact until they build the house.
For the fire protection. What I, so fully aware, we collect the impact fees and we do the development agreements. What I couldn't tell you, I have no data for right now, is how does that compare to what it should be? What are the services that were? Right. What are the services that they're paying for versus what are the services that we actually support and supply?
So I'm not following you, Brad, say it one more time.
So take the fire one, it was fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollars for, for fire, fire protection for each house. What does it cost per house when you put that infrastructure? When you have to now supply that utility or that service to that home? What does that pay?
That's what the analysis did, was determine what the capital improvements were, because impact fees can only be for capital improvements. And I think they have to spend it within like eight years. And they do this whole analysis on what that fee should be. And then they can update it whatever you
How many homes are within the fire district based on their annual budget divided by?
Right.
So we think it's covering costs today, the, the finance wizards would tell us that we're covering our cash with the impact fees today.
For fire, well, maybe we're really covering, but
Somebody, if somebody's doing the analysis, so I'm assuming the data's there and they
Done the data.
Yeah. That was, and that study was, I don't know what year that was done, twenty-two?
Right after they, before they did it, then they update them periodically.
And is there a, a method of review to adjust those for inflationary costs?
I think that they would have to adjust it. I, I don't know, I don't recall that part in the ordinance. It's a Valley County adopted ordinance, we collect the fee, but the fire departments and EMS districts drive it.
So back to the comprehensive plan, do we have language in here that covers? Cause you brought up the new section, which I was looking only at the verbiage that we had here, not that.
This is, yeah, it's
It sounds like
We're sure that new development pays for its own impacts on facilities, utilities and services.
What chapter is that in?
Public facilities, yeah, chapter eleven.
Page fifty-nine and page seventy-six on the PDF.
Fifty-nine and sixty in yours, Brad.
We have a good system going, maybe gentlemen. I don't know why Ken has going on his version.
Going off of the one that was sent to us?
Maybe that was the first one.
So what page?
Ninety-nine or seventy-six of the PDF.
I'm on page fifty-nine, yes.
So I think all of that is actually covered in here?
But it's, well, maybe. Under goal one, it says to consider. And I struck the word to consider and added the word implement. Implement a capital improvement program, development agreements and impact fees.
Yeah, cause we've done all three of these.
It, it, the, the reason behind the word change is say, yes, we're doing this. I mean, we are currently doing it.
Correct.
So let's say that in there instead of saying just consider it. Or you could put utilize. To utilize capital improvement programs, development agreements and impact fees programs. Yeah, that's fine. And you're, you're strengthening it a little bit. Cause it, it sounds like it's there. Right. And then under number three, under the objectives, instead of explore adoption, I suggest adopt an impact fee ordinance. Don't we already have one?
Oh. Board of County Commissioners are the active party there and they have explored it on a number of occasions. Three times. And it does not, it's, it's nothing they have wanted to continue to pursue.
For what services?
Sheriff, roads, recreation, schools.
Well, the sheriffs.
Utility providers, etc.
Roads.
And I think from a public policy standpoint, cause this is what we're doing, is we're trying to set the policy for the county, or we're recommending it.
Yeah, we're not setting it.
We're recommending it? I absolutely think that should be front center. And I totally disagree that there's not a, a more substantial impact fees for the new, new folks that are coming, cause they are not paying their way. And you can go to multiple studies that have been done that's, that say that they're not, not paying their way. Farm Bureau's got one out that was, it's been widely quoted and it's old, it's old, it should be, it should be redone.
So you want to change that to adopt instead of explore adoption?
I would recommend that, that's. I actually agree with that. I think it's a way for us to speak directly to the commissioners through comprehensive plan, but it's probably worth, worthy of a comp, of a discussion with them. They may want to take it back out as adopt, but I think I agree with paying your own way for, especially when I see things like roads, schools.
Roads, taxes don't go for roads. So that's kind of an interesting one, they had a hard time coming up with the data on that. That's the challenge there. Is your taxes don't pay for roads.
Rainbow Bridge needs to be a toll bridge.
What's their proportional share? Anyway, let's not get into the, the drudges of all of that.
Can we put that in here? Rainbow Bridge needs to be a toll bridge. And you can buy a fast, you can buy a fast pass.
That's funny, I like it.
How much money would you raise?
I'm pretty sure that would go to the state of Idaho.
It shouldn't.
It's ITD.
It should go to our roads.
So the county roads
Put in a bridge so you can have it toll.
Property taxes.
Well, at least part of it is not funded by property tax. So there's road funding and Valley County has a lot of I'll, I'll withdraw my suggestion there, but on the roads portion, but I would like it to say adopt, I think it is. I don't want to get us down a rabbit hole. We could go forever. Yeah, it's, I mean, quickly on the roads. And I, and I, I don't know how the road department and the commissioners come up with a development agreement, with the road impacts.
That's a great question.
And is there any uniformity to it?
You should ask them.
And is it adequate? Because if it is working well, what we should see is we should see roads being constructed that have higher capacity because of developments in areas, or we should see better maintenance on roads? And I don't know about you, but I don't see that.
Impact fees can only go for capital improvements.
And where's the capital improvement being done on all of these impact development agreements?
Well, we, we can't, let's have an offline, I'll have a offline discussion with you, Ken. Because we had, if you want to talk about a capital improvement program, can't do it. So we use some of those numbers put together by parametrics for a negotiation with a developer. And what we like them to do is actually construct the route. For example, River Fork Ranch will be making improvements from Highway fifty-five through their development, it will be paved. What other subdivision do you want to know about? I can tell you what we've required.
Yeah, and paved on top of what, the existing roadbed?
No.
Well, no, it'd be engineered to county spec, with your base, your asphalt.
And who's paying for that?
Developer.
Hundred percent?
Hundred percent, building it.
Okay, that's a, that's an example of it starting to work, but I
We haven't had that much development. I mean, outside of developed areas. I mean, we've got a lot of Tamrac stuff coming, Tamrac Falls is gonna come through with their development agreement. I mean, we just haven't, everyone thinks we've got all these subdivisions everywhere and we really don't.
Well, I, I think
Heidi's working on one right now.
We can't explain, we can't discuss like specific projects.
No, let's not. There are some subdivisions out on Moon Ranch, not the one Heidi is working on, that had to make improvements to the shoulders.
Um, I think in something we recently approved, we recommended to the board of county commissioners that they look at the intersection off of Farm to Market and
Barker.
Barker.
Yep.
Farm to Market and Barker.
Which is a bad section and that's what we recommended to the board of county commissioners to look at for the development agreement.
And so, yes, it's happening. Where there's development. But where there isn't any development, I mean, there hasn't been development yet, West Four or
I think there, again, there has to be a, you know, if, if you have a twenty lot subdivision, it, it still has to make sense.
It has to be proportional.
Right. And so that, that could be pretty minimal in your eyes, it might not be something that you notice, like now we have a new subdivision, but we're, still have the same old road. Well, they can't repave the whole road, that defeats the purpose of, you know, so I think it's more minimal than maybe what you're envisioning you would like to see.
So, and, and I, I get the, the intersection or the road to, what do you call it, River Fork Ranch, is that the one that they're gonna redo? That's fine. But there is a significant need and it's growing quickly for, who's gonna, who's gonna redo Farm to Market Road? Have you driven Farm to Market Road recently? It's always been narrow. We now have probably ten times the traffic on that road than we had fifteen years ago. People are trying to ride bikes on it, it's, the roadbed's falling apart, maybe there's plans to repay part of it. But those are, that's million dollar a mile improvements. Where's that million dollars, gonna, multiple millions of dollars coming from, from
We need to adopt a tax levy.
Yeah, agree.
I agree. There needs to be a highway district that's tax funded in Valley County. And there's a part of that that should go to the ongoing maintenance and upkeep that everybody, including all of us that have been here for
Absolutely.
We should all pay.
We, we all use those roads, we should all pay for it.
But the increased capacity should be put onto the shoulders of the new residents that are coming in, the new buyer. Right. So there's
And that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
I'm gonna back us up for just a second because I am guilty of having, having read objective three and ignoring objective four. And I would suggest maybe that we combine three and four from our current discussion. So number four is mitigate impacts of development through negotiation of development agreements, which is where Cindy was leading us. And we said, adopt, adopt an impact fee ordinances, maybe those two can be combined.
Yeah, I would rather not, because they are two different functions. One is ordinance driven and that's the impact fee based on state statutes. The other one is an entirely different statute. Four is the Local Land Use Planning Act. Impact fees are a different statute. So I don't want to combine the two statutes, they're two different efforts. One, the impact fees could be something that's obtained with a building permit. Development agreement is, is what a developer would have to
Digital development. So what if we, so, go ahead. So maybe we're going to the same place, but maybe we could say the same strength of language and say mitigate impacts of development through an impact fee ordinances.
So you want me to just duplicate that?
I think then it puts, and, and I'd like feedback from the commissioners on where they see that you give them a tremendous amount of flexibility, which I think is valuable
you give them a tremendous amount of flexibility, which I think is valuable to the commissioners doing the development agreements. But there's a portion of that that may also just be set as adoption of an impact fee. If you're an additional home in a school zone, you're not going to go do a, a additional, you're not going to do a development agreement. But you may want to do an impact, you're going to have an impact fee for the school, for the, you know, and that's based on the number of houses or.
When, when you build your house, um, but what the developer could do in the development agreement is, is build a bus stop.
Right.
So they're two different things. One's operation or capital improvements for the facilities, and the other one is.
Or maybe they set aside land for a school.
In the development agreement, yeah. And, and that's where I'm seeing two different mechanisms to get to the, to the same way. So I understand not, not separating them or keeping them separate. But I still like the strengthened language in there that.
So I was going to change it to mitigate impacts of development, uh, with an impact fee ordinance for other services. So it's exactly the same language on both.
What do we mean in that, in number four with utility providers? What, what are we getting at with that?
Cable conduit.
Even though we already require that.
Well, we require it because it's in here.
Got it.
Like the conduits for all your.
This is what led us to write that ordinance.
Got it, right, thanks.
And I think that doesn't, where do we, where do we stand? What allows us to stand on providing like underground?
And that needs to be five.
Underground power. Like, I mean.
I mean, that would be, to me, I think that's overstepping. There are certain areas where that's not possible. It's definitely not cost effective. I think that's something we can encourage.
Have we done that in the past on a, on any, um, conditional use permits of requiring underground power? Usually it's the developer decides that they want to actually have that.
Yeah, because if they're on a big rock, they probably don't want it.
Underground power would be the one that also starts to dictate that.
Well, well, something like that come in and part of the WUI discussion since power lines are.
I don't think it can. I think that's overstepping because there are certain areas that they have to run overhead, or there are certain areas that they're going to have to bore, you know, so I think that's overstepping. I think it's something that can be encouraged for the beautification of Valley County.
And in the trees, you don't see it.
Right.
So. It's the fire thing. That one. Get to when we write in ordinance. Okay.
Fire and beauty.
What else in here?
I have, I have one other topic I want to chat about for impact fees, and I don't know if it belongs here. It may belong in a different section under housing.
Under your SPFA count? What?
SPFA count. That was what I said. Affordable housing. We, here, multiple times a year, a developer comes in and they're, um, promoting a subdivision, and they're going to say, well, we're going to have, these are going to be affordable housing. I don't know that there's a single house. Well, there might be a few. There's always exceptions, but I don't know that there are houses available that are affordable in Valley County uh, for the service workers that they can actually afford to buy.
Anywhere.
Anywhere. Because I, I, I looked on your, pick your favorite real estate listings app and go try to find a house for less than five million dollars.
There's a few in Cascade.
And I'm, I, and we, we definitely have a need for it. It's a need all across the country. It's a need worldwide, actually, now where people can't afford housing. I don't know, and, and a little more background, we got, what, seventy-five percent now of our homes in Valley County, our second homes? Is that the number?
I thought it was like eighty-two percent.
Well, it wasn't seventy-eight.
Oh, so it's higher than I thought.
Yeah.
So it's way up there.
I bet it's, we were like top ten for the United States.
Here's the, here's the scenario that unfolds. People come here to spend two weeks, a month, or the summer in their second home, and they want to have their lawn mowed, they want to have a nice dinner, they want somebody to clean their house. All of those things require service workers. And is it time that we start discussing a method to collect some sort of a fee?
For non-owner occupied houses?
Potentially, and, and, and this may or may not be allowed in state statute. And that's okay, because it's places and discussions like this where you form up ideas that become state law. Is it time that we, we consider a concept that says, when they get a building permit, there's going to be a ten thousand dollar fee that they're going to pay for a house, uh, that is going to go towards an affordable housing fund that the county administers, and that they go out and they build three, five-story multifamily buildings where people can afford to live in.
The county builds this?
Maybe they work with a partner, uh, uh, partnership. Or maybe they provide the land and the utilities. Where they should be located, to me, is near a grocery store, near a bank, if they, they don't even need a bank anymore. You do that electronically. Or near a school, and definitely near central sewer and water systems and near a park. Should we start thinking along those lines? I'm just, I'm raising the question.
The thought for second homes is a good thought, in my opinion. But the collection of the fee when you get a building permit, I think is the wrong place to do it. Because there are still people who bought their lot thirty, forty, fifty years ago that now want to build their own home. And it won't be their second home. You're still penalizing those people who have a lot. I mean, younger people who've, who, I mean, ten thousand bucks might be a, a deal breaker for them to come up with ten thousand dollar fee upfront. We've had people walk out because they couldn't pay the fire. Because they wanted their building permit and they were going to build it themselves. And it was local people. Probably a better place to put that fee or obtain those revenues is, um, people with, who don't have a homeowner's exemption would indicate that they're a second home in, in a different spot.
Get a levy.
Right.
I, I actually like that idea. Is that, that's probably not allowed by state statute.
But like you said, it could be a thought, an idea in the plan.
Could you draft that state language?
I'll just make sure I get it in here and I'll let everyone know.
No, I mean, Sinda, I want, I want the draft of the state law.
The legislation.
Have your, your prosecuting attorney.
Shari right now is on a, a group committee that is looking at affordable housing. It's a state.
I don't think the system we have today is working. It's not working across the country. It's, Boise Valley has the same issue.
It's just amplified here. Any resort town is.
And we are following to a T what has happened in Blaine County. And, and what they do now is they bust people out of Twin Falls up there to work.
Tamarack provides their own housing because they can't.
So does Shore Lodge.
Yeah, a lot of people aren't.
So do the schools. Right.
Do the.
So, and bottom line, I, what I'm, what I'm getting tired of is when somebody comes in to propose a subdivision, they say, well, these are going to be affordable housing lots. No, they're not.
But they're affordable to somebody.
They are.
They're not community housing.
But they sell it on the concept, oh, we're going to do this thing for all the, the lower income folks, and that's not true.
Well, I can say it. Ken, do you believe him?
Right, it's our interpretation.
And you know, the other, I've heard this before too, um, that, oh, we, we got to create more inventory.
I do believe in supply and demand.
But it, it works on most things, but not affordable housing in Valley County, because we just said that they can't afford anything.
Supply and demand rule is pretty limitless. So, but what you're saying is to get the, an average three-bedroom, two-bath house to the level that the service worker could afford one, you would crash the Valley County housing market. Because wages aren't going up, so to get a house where you could buy it for a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand again, you're going to go back twenty years, which means the only way to do that is crash the valley, you know, that's how supply and demand would work. Over supply prices drop, it's now affordable housing problem.
Two thousand eight.
Is that where it was? Yeah. Twenty years.
I think, but what, part of that is a deed restriction. If someone truly is trying to do workforce housing or community housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to call it, then for increased densities and things, and we put it, we have, put a deed restriction on it. That's how you can control it.
And, and when it's a deed restriction, Sinda, is that rent established by a formula?
It would, it would be a percentage of the median income. Or if they purchased it a certain price, they could only increase the value and sell it at a value, um, like a three percent per year or something like that. Depending on how you develop that deed restriction. I'm pretty sure there are restrictions in here.
Like HUD comes into place.
Say that one more time?
Isn't that where, um, like section eight housing?
No, that's, uh, federal.
Right.
The Department of State or that.
Right. So wouldn't, that's, but a developer can, can't a developer meet certain requirements so that their development, um, is qualified or approved through HUD?
There's, I think, that might be section forty-two housing, I think is what you're talking about, where they build the entire thing and then it's rent controlled. Is that what?
I'm not sure how it works.
I'm not either.
Uh, that's section eight. Section eight is rent controlled.
Yeah, section eight provides funding for the public housing, housing vouchers, housing assistance programs for low-income families, seniors, and people with disabilities.
So where we're going is we would like to bulk up the language in our comprehensive plan around affordable housing?
Well, read what we have.
That's where I was going.
Where you start bulking too much, uh, page forty-eight on your spread.
It's in the background section.
Raise local employer to provide workforce housing. Why raise locations?
I have two page forty-eights, by the way.
Right, we haven't renumbered yet, but. You're on the right one there.
I'm in the graphs, page two. It's just at the end of the graphs.
The housing chapter?
Yes, page fifty-two or sixty-three of the PDF.
So it does have the ADUs.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Does this have the?
It does have deed restriction. Tax incentives, donated land, siding with housing, no minimum square feet regulations, conversion of existing structures, employee consortiums, finance, housing, tax breaks for long-term rentals, increased density and service, increased. Put in deed restriction.
And also, do we have anything on the, rain fog's kicking in, so when you ran out, you have short, short-term rentals. Do we have anything on that? Because that does have also a significant impact, I believe.
There's a change needed in the state law, for sure.
We can't prohibit it.
Yeah, we, we can't do any, you, you could, you can figure out how to tax them, I think is about the only thing that you can do.
Well, they're taxed, a state income tax, plus a state.
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax.
State lodging tax.
And sales tax.
And then additional local levies on lodging. I thought you could. What was Macaulay's?
You can inside of it.
For auditory districts, you can.
You can in an incorporated ci- city have a local option tax, but you can't in an unincorporated area. And I know that Shari's fighting that one hard. There's a group that's fighting that.
That seems.
So we could put it in here.
I think there'd be something, and then when we license short-term rentals, is there an impact fee poten- potential that you could attach to that license?
Right. Is, is a permit that they get now to have a?
It's just an administrative permit.
There's no fee.
It's a seventy-five.
There's a.
Yeah, a fee to cover the administration.
Seventy-five bucks.
Basically to process the application.
I'm wondering if there's a, I wonder if there's a way to leverage revenue out of that with some.
You gotta amend the, I think you gotta amend the state law.
State law.
And you can't charge a fee that exceeds, uh, your cost of processing. But we could do like a goal.
That's, that's the challenge. Well, is there a munis?
Your invoice.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven fifty.
Well, we could do a, like, goal six. Just, um, something about make efforts to, um, make short-term rentals pay for themselves and then decrease, decrease that inventory, and then we can say.
Reduce impact or something, yeah, from short-term rentals is all.
And let's see, so you want to do convert to long-term, because I already hear one, it's with long-term, local option taxes. What else? Whatever in neighborhoods. We can put it in here. I believe I'll, I'll check the legal.
And we could start putting that, from our standpoint, um, in some of these restrictions of not more than, can, I'm, I'm, this, I'm going to rephrase. Can we, as a planning and zoning commission, when these subdivisions come up, give them a percentage that they can't exceed? There's no, no way we can restrict it.
Though what we've done is.
We've asked them, we've asked them to put it in their CCNRs to restrict it, because most people don't know that state law prohibits that.
Yeah, that's.
So we can encourage that in the CCNRs. But knowing our state statute, if they wanted to push the issue.
They wouldn't.
They would win. As, as the homeowner.
Pretty good case law on that, I think, so far where, if you have it in your CCNRs, anybody who already has one can do it. But if you have it in the CCNRs at the time that they purchased it, then it's valid. That's my understanding of it currently. So if we get it in the initial CCNRs of a, of a subdivision, I think then, I think it would stand, but not a.
But the people that have, the people that have depressed the issue are.
Are the neighbors.
Someone else.
And the developer has to agree to put it in the CCNRs originally as written.
So with this goal, I have lobby state legislature to allow control of short-term rentals, and then I have convert short-term rentals to long-term rentals, local option tax in unincorporated areas, a limit number in neighborhoods, and then encourage control of short-term rentals.
You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Great for me.
That's goal six.
Thank you.
Can I, I've got a couple more things on my list here. Sinda, you have a printed copy of my stuff as well, but under chapter four, we briefly talked about it, uh, two weeks ago. I would like to have something in here. I would like to have something in here.
Looking at this graph.
This new graph?
This new graph.
Yeah, we have new graph.
Yeah, and we, didn't we decide to put that in?
Land use. Yep, that will go in land use, yes. Hannah put this together. And this is a graph here. This will just be a, a table on value. Top one. And then she put together two formats of the same data. And I think this one is a better picture. That would go under land use.
The totals and the assessed value doesn't match.
Well, maybe it does.
That one will just, uh, remain a table because of the ninety-six number. I mean, that would just be a ridiculous graph.
How is, um, assessed value of mines only one point seven?
Right now. I don't know how they assess it, that's how they assess it, based on state code. I don't know how much they can do for a mine. This makes numbers out of the office. This is the graph, I think. And this is on use, acreages.
Right. No, I, I actually think this, this tells the story of the land that we have jurisdiction over for land use planning.
So that would go in land use, not the natural resources. Natural resources includes state and federal.
So the idea is to just include this one? Okay, and this is just information?
Yeah, that's just information. Where we got the, where she got the graphs from. And then this one will go, this is the updated numbers you wanted.
Excellent. And are those values with, uh, like in the ag, is that with the ag exemption?
It's the assessed value.
That's, that's value of the lands less the exemption. Cause ag gets a different exemption.
Much, much, much lower.
Yeah.
It's based on It's based on, um, profitability. Okay, so Chapter Four.
That's a great ad, by the way.
Oh, Kelly, she did a great job.
Yeah, that's an awesome thing.
Tell her Lori.
I raised this at the meeting the other night. In Chapter Four, we have a couple different goals. Resources. You know, the protect the natural resource, so forth. Goal Three was to protect fish around life. Goal Five was to maintain sustainable commercial harvest for timberland resources.
I'm in a different area. My Goal Five is to ensure mining remains, I'm in natural resources.
Yeah.
Sure, mining remains viable.
He said five, but right.
I said, I meant four, yeah. And then five is sure mining. I'm not quite sure what Goal Six means, to protect vegetation as a valuable resource in Valley County. This is back to Heidi's grass type for her.
I would say that's specifically related.
What this is?
This is open space, this is, I mean, it's, it's not farmland.
So it's open space?
It's just open space, it's vegetation, it's, um.
So should we put the word open space in there?
Vegetation.
That's what you said. Cause when I read it, I was going, like, what does this mean?
Well, I don't know if it's a, is it a resource?
Is it somebody who has like a five-acre lot, you don't want them covered in weeds?
I think that's the thing. Well, this is protect vegetation. This is to protect it, you have to read the objective. From the intrusion of invader species, plants and noxious weeds by supporting noxious weed eradication. So we're protecting the vegetation.
So have a ground cover that is not weeds, is that kind of the intent?
Yes.
In the open spaces?
Right, but we've, open space is somewhere else too, but this is to protect the vegetation. Because when you have a noxious weed come in, it starts taking over.
But if you say native vegetation?
Well, most of Valley County is not native. Native is
Non-noxious.
Okay.
I see where you're going with it now. I'm just trying to figure out how we make it self-evident in the statement.
Preferred or preferred vegetation, correct?
Desirable vegetation.
Desirable.
Desirable?
Desirable, that's the word.
I, as I was reading this, I was like
Grass in the field over there.
Is it a, but is it, so
Right.
Is it a resource? As a valuable resource, is it a resource?
Yes, because it's not noxious. Yes, it is a resource. It provides elk, deer.
Pasture for my horses.
Erosion control.
Erosion control, yeah. That's a biggie.
I was, I was, where you're at, I was trying to figure out what in the world is this and why is it in this section? So now it makes a little more sense.
To create for, I mean, to gives us the lead to require people to eradicate their noxious weeds.
The, the one goal that I, if we're going down this list and we're talking about timber and mining and whatnot, I suggested that we add a, an ag land section to, to ensure that, to copy the language from the mining or the timber one, was to ensure that agriculture remains a viable element in the Valley County economy.
Well, you know, and we have that ag protection area now.
Yeah, I don't
All you ag users need to use it.
Well, we're not going to.
So explain that to me. Cause isn't, you know, so if we look at it as families who have owned ag land here for years, as things change, as time goes on, how else can you ensure that it's protected? If, if that is the goal, for nothing to be able to happen for that, how, I'm just looking for like
Right, the ag protection area does nothing for that protection. The only thing the ag protection does at this point in time is it creates a bit of a buffer from county regulations or local regulations to not interfere with ag operations. That's the only benefit.
But didn't it have something to do with, like, no future development?
Yeah, for twenty years.
Well, you can pull it out at any time.
No, you can't. No, you can't. No, you can't. You can't pull it out for a minimum of ten years, and then you have to show a financial hardship.
That must be, it was at the, maybe it changed that this year. It, anyway, we're not, we're not standing in line to sign up. There, as far as I know, there is one landowner that has got an application in right now. Maybe another one is pending. But they're not the vast majority of the ag producers are not headed there.
I saw a guy on the news the other night, and I, I just happened to click through. And I think he was from Canyon County, and he was going on and on about how the APA was the most wonderful thing, and he was an ag producer.
It is in certain areas. Where, like in Canyon County, where you have a lot of local regulations that want to interfere with what they're doing? It is a good thing. I don't know that it's the right
I just don't know how it protects an ag user from us.
And it protects, doesn't it? It, it protects the land from being developed, and it protects opposition from someone who comes in, right, with big impacts, yeah.
Which we have already under state law.
So, like a Goal Nine, protect agricultural lands?
What, what I'm saying is because we've prioritized these other industries, it seems appropriate that we also make a statement about
So we want to encourage agricultural.
Remain viable.
Encourage agricultural lands remain viable.
Something along those lines. And then under the objective, the, the one objective that, um, I think makes sense is, um, we've, we've talked about this checkerboard concept before. And if you have ag land and then all of a sudden you flop down, you know, a forty-acre chunk in the middle of ag ground is a residential development, that is, that is incredibly disruptive to ag production. And there is a myriad of issues where they just it creates a lot of conflict. Can you live with it?
Yeah.
But the conflicts now. For instance, if you have a residential area and they all get, they have dogs, and the dogs run and start chasing cows. They could start complaining about spraying weeds, they start complaining about dust, or they threaten a lawsuit, or they file lawsuit against you for spraying, or something like that. Those are the kind of things that just keep mounting. And it's what affects a viable ag operation in, in an area. And that's what, that's the concept behind of creating that critical mass of acreage, cause if a farmer has to go from this ten-acre field to that forty-acre field, and then drive another mile to another one, they're, they're on their way out.
So how, how do you do that when this ag land is owned by
Owned by you, they have the right to do what they
By multiple people, and as things are changing, and families who have been in ag for years and years are selling.
You can't prohibit.
How do we, how? I get that, I get what you're saying, I get the concept. I just don't know how that's you know, it's not, that would be like if you wanted to protect all of your land.
That'd be like me saying, I don't want a house next to me, so I want that protected, but I'm not gonna buy it.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll go down that path with you for a while. But are we gonna follow the compatibility rating? That we, that we establish? And are we gonna actually do it the correct way?
Well, that's part of the ordinance changes. Is we're going to redo that matrix.
Okay, so if we
I guess, I get, I get the concept, but that, that goes back to like the land, the owners of the ag land. Right.
So, so you're saying that a developer can come in the middle of
No, I do think, I think it has to be compatible. I, I do. But with, but I do think where's like this balance? How, I guess the idea of not having this checkerboard effect, how, how do we do that if there's people who are selling their ag ground? Splitting up, selling off portion.
Rancher sells this piece in the middle because it's kind of dry and shrubby. The developer Well, the ag user sold it. Are we gonna prohibit people from selling their properties?
So why is the developer
We're going down a rat hole here, we're not gonna get back out of, so
Let's get back to
No, wait, just Agree on is we do a goal along the lines of what Ken's suggesting, which is to maintain, you know, sustainable agricultural harvesting within Valley County.
Encourage, it's the same thing for the mining.
Yeah, it's
Agricultural use.
Yeah, and then the objectives probably comes down to the encourage again.
Or discourage patchwork.
We could, yeah, you could put it either way. Because I think we're, I think we're in alignment that we want the agricultural, but we also have, you know, property rights of people who sell their land that we have to recognize as well when it comes up. So
We have ranchers who are developing certain parts of their farm.
Yep.
And subdividing it.
Right.
So
I've done that, and I did it where there was central sewer and water.
Okay.
And so I think those are the types of things where we could say, you know, then, then let's frame the objective of, for it.
Discourage patchwork through incentives.
Yeah, through incentives or through compatibility. Compatibility of uses, you know, or, cause our compatibility score does take a lot of those things into account. And so we're, we're looking at it, but it's not, it's short, it's gonna be short of an ordinance. If somebody wants to sell their land right in the middle of the farm and develop it, they're gonna
Would we approve that?
Probably.
Why? When we know darn well what our comp plan says about preserving the rural nature of the county.
Because it's not an ordinance, and that property owner has rights to develop his property, whether it's agriculture agricultural or non-agricultural.
As long as it doesn't adversely affect
And I don't know if it would or not, given, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a thousand scenarios where it could, and that piece of property could be right in the middle, but still have access to infrastructure down the main highway that goes down it. I don't know, okay, cause it's all hypothetical. But it gets analyzed the same way that we would analyze any other, um, request. And so, do I think it's worthy of stating a goal? I do. Do I think we can, we're using the words encourage, discourage with whatever we want to phrase after that in the words? And I think we could agree to, that's, that's what we're trying to plan for here. We could put a discourage patchwork, we could the incentives went through me a little bit as well, so I want you to finish your thoughts on that. But I think it's worthy of a goal, I think it's worthy of an objective that goes along with that. But I don't wanna go down the path of hypothetical situations where we would or wouldn't, because hell if I know, it's all hypothetical.
So what I wrote was to encourage agricultural lands remain viable. Objective one, discourage patchwork development through incentives. Encourage standards of development that promote compatibility between uses.
Tell me about your incentive, tell me.
Incentives, well, they haven't been created yet. This is, this is a guide. This is something that
What is your train of thought with the incentives?
Incentives?
How about support and encourage agricultural uses that meet environmental standards and comply with state and local water quality goals, recognizing the importance of farming and ranching to the rural economy, economy and community character?
Is that already in here?
I don't know.
It was an AI generated.
I, I, I generated AI. Work, work in partnership with agricultural operations to identify and mitigate potential impacts to infrastructure and community resources, including housing, employment, traffic, road maintenance, and utilities, with an emphasis cooperative solutions that sustain both agriculture and community well-being. Yes, it's broad because then it goes back to our comprehensive plan. But it gets the point across.
I actually think it does a pretty good job of capturing
Send it to me then, and I'll put it here.
So what, explain just a little more on incentives that you had in
There aren't any right now. This would lead us to create some
Create some incentives.
What, million dollars?
Maybe there's, you know, like, the open space levy down in the Boise Valley. Maybe there's a tax incentive. Maybe, you know, a certain area adopts a levy that allows that land to be purchased. That type of thing.
I'm not opposed to putting that in there now, I understand, or, or where you're headed. I think that might be a good three, number three on there.
Well, that was number one, oh, you're at number one?
Yeah, she gave you one and two, I think.
One and two.
Objective three about the use of incentives.
And then they encourage standards of development or promote compatibility between uses. And then they encourage standards of development or promote compatibility between uses.
I think that's four.
Four.
One and two from Carrie. Push down the line.
Okay, I hate to, I hate to come late, but I'm gonna request a short break.
Me too.
Just step out.
I got one more thing to bring up on this one, but go ahead.
On this one or one more thing total?
Oh, no, I got like six more.
Okay, recorders.
Trying to be good.
The mic is on.
I gotta remember where I was going with this. I, I'm gonna ask you, I wanna ask you a question to the group here. Here's forty acres. Okay. And tell me, how many lots does it take before you would require a central water and central sewer?
We don't know, I mean, I could never tell you that, I'm not, I'm not an expert. That's why we would rely on the health department, DEQ, Idaho Department of Water and Resource.
I think that's why there were standards on size, we went with a minimum of one acre. We had changed it to two acres one time, and it wasn't doing what the board wanted it to, which was preserve open space, because then people just did two, 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 they'd rather have one, 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 one. That you don't have these huge weed patches.
I wish I could answer that question, but it's not what I went to college for.
Now, I'm gonna, I wanna throw a different, different scenario on it. This ground, next to it, is in the sewer and water district. Now, is this required?
I think that makes sense.
State statute has a, a limit on that. There's a standard, what is it, three, if you're two hundred feet?
Okay, I'm gonna move it over to. And I just moved it three hundred feet, so we'll make sure and cover it, now what happens? Is this?
Again, I think that this depends on capacity, this depends on.
They're out of capacity. So, the sewer district, the pipe isn't big enough. Should this be required to have central sewer water?
Let's say the pipe's not big enough and the treatment facility's not big enough.
Yeah, it's not.
Then no.
But it can be made big enough.
For millions and millions of dollars.
Brad?
Not playing. There's way too many variables.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
To answer the question, I understand where you're going, but there's a lot of variables outside of that forty acres distance to services and everything.
And what if, what if the sewer district boundary, or the service area is two, three miles away, but this is in the master planned area for the sewer district? And it's gonna, it's in their master plan area.
But if it's in their master plan area, wouldn't they then have plans and means to extend their services that direction?
No, North Lake has gone miles and miles outside for their service area, but none of it is annexed in. The annexation is the key to getting, to use the sewer. They might have a service area, but it's not annexed in.
If we allow individual wells and septic on this piece of ground, it will never be annexed. This is the whole concept of this patchwork that I'm trying to promote, that try and begins to think long-term.
I get it completely, and I think it is the right thought process, I just think in this situation, the cost is going to do the opposite of what you're wanting.
I can think of some of this, when we developed a Lehigh facility for Micron, we were three miles from Lehigh City. And because Micron had deep pockets, we could put in all of the infrastructure and tie it all the way into Lehigh City infrastructure. And that was the right thing to do, rather than developing our own sewage facility and that, like we have here in Boise. It has its own water and sewage and everything else. There, we said, let's tie it to the city, improve both. But that was because the city utilities and Micron worked together to come up with that. And in the long run, that was, I think, the right decision. But that's the type of discussion you're talking about here, which is, it will never get tied in if they go develop it on their own, or if they put in septic permit, you know, septics and, and that upfront. But that's where the utilities and the developers have to work together to decide what's best as well. And that's for the developer, gonna be what's most cost-effective for the municipality and DEQ and those other agencies involved. That's where they're going to say what's right longer term.
And the site, site-specific?
And it's very site-specific. It depends on if you're gonna require, you know, massive pumping stations, or if you have a gravity. What's the soil in that area like? Is it, could it sustain that many septics systems and do a good job of it? Is it not a good, you know, is a lot of clay soil, all those kinds of things. But that's where I think, from a, you're gonna, the only way you're gonna get ahead of this is between those municipalities doing more, and, and the agencies looking at it, because as a planning and zoning commission, you're not gonna get to make those decisions for them, because we don't have the data when we, the decision comes to us, it's very preliminary, right?
Should we, as a planning and zoning commission, require them to actually dive into that question and answer that question? Or do we say, eh, don't worry about it, just go ahead and have your sewer and water?
Well, I think we can implement that and have them work together in part of their.
That's what they do during their due diligence and the creation of their subdivision, their neighborhood meetings, is we always encourage people to go talk to the sewer district. Not if they're, I mean, especially if they're adjacent to, right there on West Roseberry. I mean, we're talking feet from the sewer district. They can't connect in, right on West Roseberry, is what they're telling us.
Because, is there a reason why?
Well, I haven't talked to him in a couple of years. Because there isn't enough capacity in that line, so they would have to redo the entire line, right?
Is there anything wrong with that?
But who, how can that fall on the?
How can that fall?
Developer who wants to develop twenty acres, that they're gonna replace the whole line?
And that happened with a development out there in the Wagon Wheel area, I mean, give us, oh, we need a whole bunch of lines fixed, so you have to fix them all. So, anyway, that's, we're going down a rabbit hole again.
No, so, I, I, I'm gonna put a stop, because there is nothing wrong with having a developer build that. You got, I, I think there's a mentality, it's like, oh, it's too expensive, you can't do it. I don't care how expensive.
But Ken, my point is, it's, if, I, I get it, and that's why I don't think we can, how do we solve for this? Because the expense, you might not care how expensive it is, but it's, it's gonna push a developer out. It's gonna change the idea of us growing from a city outward, in my opinion.
It's gonna devalue the property.
Correct.
Yeah. And that is our number one goal.
What?
To maintain the values of properties.
That's our number one goal?
That's one of the goals in our. Maintain the values of.
If we require a certain property to hook up and it's gonna cost them ten million dollars.
They're gonna go buy.
They're gonna go dump their land.
They're gonna go develop it.
And they're gonna go where? If you say, I, I wanna understand the concept.
I just think they would have to go look for more rural acreage to develop, because it's too expensive to, to tie into this infrastructure, and it might, and I think this is what you're saying, this is so site-specific. So site-specific, so it's hard to generalize it, I could.
So another, another example is you, you come in and you say, okay, you're gonna put in a hundred homes, so that's a ten-inch line I'm making stuff of. But the problem is, you put that ten-inch line and you tie it in, and the developer paid for the ten-inch line. If you want to be ahead of the growth, you don't put in a ten-inch line, put in a twenty-four, you put in a twenty-four or whatever. So, the next subdivision that you want to encourage being in this now area, you've said you're going to develop and support and encourage growth in, but you can't expect the developer to put in a twenty-four inch line and pay for three other people's development. And so, that's, that's where you come back to working with the municipalities. It can't be only on the one developer, the concept that you're talking about, I totally agree with. But you have to figure out, we have to figure out how to get these service providers to think longer term and bigger as well, and not put in the ten-inch line. How do we put in the twenty-four inch line and encourage development in that area?
Right, no, they're doing that, they have master plans and they have late comer agreements, like Developer X does the big twenty-four inch line, and they, ten years or whatever, they allow ten, fifteen years. If the next developer comes in, they reimburse that first guy for his.
But now you're requiring really deep pockets of the first developer to do that, because he's gotta carry it for.
Who knows?
People live for ten years and one day.
Right.
Yeah.
You do that with Idaho power and their vested rights all the time.
So.
So that, I, I don't know if we, I don't know what we could put in here that puts, what additional we could put in here that would meet the requirements?
Realistically, we need taxation, current taxation that brings the entire system up to speed. And then the new developers are then responsible
Yeah.
for continuing the maintenance and the capacity.
Fees have been really low in some of these services, I know, because I was on the council for seventeen years, so you, you keep those fees low, but you don't bring in enough fee to make your maintenance improvements and your capital improvements. So anyway, back to your question, Ken. Have three private property rights, Idaho Code six seven six five oh eight A. Implement the plan in order to ensure, this is directly out of the state statute, to ensure that land use policies, restrictions, conditions, and fees do not violate private property rights, adversely impact property values, or create unnecessary technical limitations on the use of the property. And that's sixty-seven, sixty-five oh eight A, that's where I got that concept.
Heidi, I wanna understand your, what your statement is. Because the cost is high to build this sewer system here, it drives them to go somewhere else, why would they go somewhere else?
Because they don't have to have the expense of tying, they can't afford it. It doesn't pencil for a project.
So the, the hundred lot subdivision on the forty acres or whatever it is is expensive here, and you say if we go over here, it's cheaper, why would it be cheaper?
It depends on the, the infrastructure upgrades, if we're saying you have to tie in five miles down the road, that's never gonna make sense.
Moves it from a developer cost to a owner cost.
So if you have to do it.
Always pay for the wells, the owner pays for the septics.
Okay.
So, if you're gonna ask it, the developer to put in the sewer line, that's on their cost, right?
That makes their lot more expensive, not easy to sell.
And it, and there's no money upfront.
Could, away from.
Much lower risk and cost for the developer.
Go out.
Right.
But if you, and so if you move out far enough where connecting isn't feasible, you're then gonna put in a septic system, which is gonna pay, paid for by the builder.
Then why are we, why are we letting them do that? Why are we letting them, the hundred lot subdivision, do a hundred lots?
Because our governing agencies don't have a problem with it.
You don't have a statute.
I, I do, I think it's absolutely crazy that we allow a hundred lot subdivision to build a certain distance away from central services, and it's okay, because they can be on individual wells and individual septic. And there is an opportunity to build it where there is central, because we allow that is why it's a problem.
But why?
You, what would you make it, five acre minimum lot size or?
That's why I have that track, remember I left that blind blank?
Yeah.
Then you consume the land, instead of having five houses.
So you have bigger patches.
One house with bigger weed patches.
I do remember you bringing that up, years ago. That's a big thing with the commissioners too.
That's, that's the challenge, is what side.
Where's that?
It's, and if it's one five acre lot, say it's five acre, I don't know, just for conversation. If it's one five acre lot, or is it five, five acre lots, at what point do you then say you have to attach? And so, right now in the county, it's one acre, people have their values built into their properties based on one acre that they could, they could go to. If you made it, if you changed that requirement, then you're gonna have an impact on property values, a pretty significant one. If you gotta have somebody who has twenty acre lot, and you're now saying, okay, it's not twenty homes, it's four, it's going to have a pretty significant impact on that acreage, on the value of the lands, right? And twenty acres, is that enough, if, because you're gonna go the other way to where it becomes a cost effectiveness game. You're either gonna have to make the lots big enough that it does make it desirable to attach to the city, so you can get the density that you want. Or you're gonna have to increase the lot size, so that you can only develop these five acre places and minimize the number of wells and septics that you have. Other words, so the, the real challenge is to the one acre. If you wanna change this, you have to change the one acre.
I think I like Carrie's idea, I, I mean, what this comes down to is funding for the infrastructure.
Correct.
Right, that's, that's, this whole conversation is about the funding for the infrastructure.
And, and about encouraging growth in areas where there's already.
If it were less expensive to hook up to city sewer, or there was, it wasn't, it didn't fall all on the developer. Developers would be more out to hooking up to the city.
If there was land available.
If there, if, if there's available land, like, five years ago, we were looking at a project off of Loomis. It was already plotted for, I think, thirty two duplexes, but we were a mile away from infrastructure. We got it down to a hundred and seventy five dollars a square foot. And trying into sewer would have meant, I think it was like two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. So it was completely.
Project's done.
Blew it out of the water.
That actually speaks to what I think we should do. Because it's expensive to get sewer and central services to a more distant location than it is to a close location, I think is absolutely what we should be doing. But our current policy is, we say, oh, developers, if you build here, it's likely you're gonna be required to hook up to sewer, but if you go over here, it's a lot cheaper. And that's what we're promoting right now. So we're promoting development in the rural areas away from.
I disagree with promoting. I don't think we're promoting anything. We're just allowing a property owner to do what they wish with their property if it makes sense and.
Well, and I think it, it's so speculative depending on a location.
Yeah.
Are you doing a two million dollar power upgrade? Are you doing upgrades to Highway fifty five? Are you, you know, I think any development has its quads, right? Your, your big ticket items. It's just so site specific. I under, I completely understand the intent. I just don't know how without infrastructure improvements, it can all get tied together. I, I just don't think that, I mean, that's a good example, Carrie, of that sounds, you said it was duplexes. So a great housing option.
Made it completely unaffordable.
Right.
I'm gonna suggest we table this.
We can't table.
We wanted to be done.
We have to finish. No, you can continue that to a different time.
I wanna suggest we table this, get through your other items, and then we'll give us whatever time you need, that we still finish by noon.
That gives us an hour and ten minutes.
Okay.
Let's get through the other ones.
I don't know what other issues you have, and I don't wanna not give them.
It was his, he didn't bring his email. It's your, it's your written whole email.
Still the same list.
Same list. I got through that one. I think the rest of these should be swiftly not controversial. Chapter five, send, this is one that, under hazard areas, I hope this will go pretty quick. Under the background, under flooding, and it says, serious flooding is not a problem in Valley County. And then it talks about however along Pant River and so forth. We, we have significant flooding here about every twenty years due to snow melt in the spring. I've seen it go over many county roads, do some significant damage. And somewhere I think we ought to address. Probably in one of the objectives somewhere, that we need to have the engineers think about rapid snow melt. Because like, for instance, the city of Donley was completely flooded and the water was going over the top of West Roseberry Road, and nobody remembers that.
Well, and that's probably old infrastructure that's not taking into account.
No, this is.
An engineer was off on their hydraulics calculating. Right.
Heidi, I, I, I don't know how, Cindy's been here all her life, Lori's been here, I think, all her life. When you get, when you get two feet of snow that's heavily crystallized on the valley floor north of Donley and in other places in this county, and we have a four or five day rain event in the spring of the year, that snow immediately turns to water.
For sure.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
And what I, the, the point I'm trying to make is, we gotta be careful where we allow residential subdivisions to be built where that can happen.
Well, and isn't that what our.
It's outside of the hundred year floodplain. It's everywhere.
Or when they're developed, developed to a standard, stormwater management.
But they are.
I know, when they develop.
Right.
But they, they're, the stormwater criteria that they're using is not taking into effect these spring events.
But you don't know that, Ken.
I do, I lived through them.
I know, but twenty years ago, which subdivision caused that?
Subdivision did not cause it. I'm just saying, these events happen in this county.
Which subdivision was flooded?
The city of Donley.
The city of Donley needs to have stormwater management.
And they, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars making improvements.
I think out in the county, we do have stormwater management.
I just know, so anytime you submit your plans for a new development, you have to have a whole section of your civil set is your stormwater calculations. And those calculations are engineered and approved for the certain storm events. Whether that storm event needs to be increased.
I think it should be addressed to, I agree with the stormwater. That's fine. What I'm talking about is not a storm event.
But they're taking into consideration, like, spring runoff is considered within those calculations.
Rain on snow events.
Yeah. And so maybe the calc, if, if we're feeling like current developments are not accounting for the correct stormwater, that, that would be a question for the engineers, because they're basing it off, they base it off of us. I don't know if it is the hundred year flood.
I think it's a twenty five year event.
Okay. But that's what they're approving all current applications to, so you have to meet those standards.
Okay, so.
The old ones didn't.
Right, and so that's where.
Let me go back to the beginning here. What was your recommendation? Somewhere in this, and, and I can't read, I think I wrote it down here. The problem with running, like, different documents. Where does it speak to flooding?
It's page twenty one, it's chapter five in the hazardous areas.
Yeah, serious flooding is not a problem in Valley County, however, along Pant River and its smaller, smaller tributaries. Occasional high water during spring runoffs floods feminine areas along the river.
To me, this is not a goal, right?
No.
This is just the background.
Yeah.
So tell me what your recommendation is, Ken.
Maybe in the, one of the objectives. Do we have anything in there? Oh, here it is, number four. It says prohibit uses in floodplains which will occur or cause damage if there is flooding. Can we expand that statement to say something's effective? Please take into account waiting on snow spring runoff events that rarely happen.
But isn't that why we have the.
Use of engineered stormwater plans or something like that that takes it back to.
We do require that though.
Special, I, I'm just saying, keep it in as an objective.
Yeah.
Stormwater plans.
Look at number three. Floodplains are separate than what you're talking about, so let's keep it away from the floodplains.
Yeah. It's almost like it needs to be a separate objective that.
Well, number three, retain existing regulations that prohibit or control construction development and filling in designated flood, flood prone areas. So that speaks to what you're talking about.
And then we could say, another one. Consider regulations that, I mean, they consider, now they consider this stuff already.
You could almost make it pretty simple, let's say, and expand number three to say, and something to, to the effect of adding the spring runoff, snow melt events.
And.
I don't know.
Snow melt.
Flood prone areas caused by.
And snow melt, snow melt events.
Major snow melt events, because considering snow melt events or something, it's, one of these days, it's gonna happen again.
Our house is in the floodplain of Boulder Creek.
Okay, you got, I think you've captured mine.
Yeah, but the, the whole idea behind, we don't have serious flooding here. I'm, I mean, there's other places, Eagles built in a floodplain.
Yeah.
Weezer, everything along the Mississippi, I mean, there's some communities, they're completely in a floodplain.
But they, that's different than.
We don't allow people in the floodplain, that's right.
It's different. That's why I like your idea that it is different than a floodplain. It is a massive snowmelt. Okay, the other one I had, I think we already touched on about adequate transportation development impact fees. Okay, chapter. After these housing, I think we already covered that one about the concept that we exhausted was requiring some impact fees for housing. The other one I had there was under eight. And this is, goes back, this is the same issue again about under objective, our goal two, objective one's on page forty nine in my version. It says
encourage developers that propose expansion or redevelopment of existing subdivisions to improve infrastructure and services.
And if we could capture the idea of, you know, it's back to our same thing, adjacent to central sewer, sewer and water services. I don't know how we, we're gonna tackle that one, but that would play out again in that chapter.
Because we kinda have it in the next one, I think, it says encourage neighborhoods to participate, participate in local improvement districts and other improvement districts.
That'd be the sewer district.
That's what I was thinking, you were talking about sewer and water centralized services.
Or service districts.
Is there a different word that would strengthen it from encourage? That's.
Well, we can't. We can't require.
Them to form an LID. Well, other improvement districts would be like CIDs. We're getting. This is existing subdivisions.
Urge, advocate, promote.
Well, goal two is existing.
The same thing I was doing, I was thinking about.
Or recommend.
Goal two is existing.
Advocate, actually. So maybe ignore that part of it, and I think Cindy, you're correct, it's existing subdivision under our goal four, the next one down. It says, the goal is to encourage new development in or near the existing cities and communities in Valley County. And then our objectives, it says encourage industrial and commercial services to locate within the cities within their areas of impact or areas similar uses. Number two is encourage industrial and commercial service to be located in industrial and commercial facilities. And three is encourage affordable housing in close proximity to job centers.
So is it the word encouragement, kinda where Heidi was going, which is, do you want to move to a stronger word, like, advocate caught my eye when you said that, or urge, or because we can't go require, I know that's your end goal, but we're not gonna get there, so what's in between?
Advocate, show support, but with authority.
That's how Heidi speaks, did you know that?
This is ChatGPT.
With empathy.
Yeah, but that statute requirement in ChatGPT, it got really confused.
Have you put the whole comp plan in ChatGPT?
Just that one new thing that we're supporting.
Yeah, I think it would be a great exercise to put it in and say, simplify this and limit it to thirty pages.
Some people have.
Okay, so that's kind of the same concept, okay, down the list. Oh, I think we might all be in agreement on this next one. Under nine, chapter nine.
We're really going all over the place, aren't we?
I'm going chronological.
Oh, you are, are we?
Well, we've jumped around a few times, but.
And I'm just gonna slip this in, just because it's a fleeting thought. This is an update to the existing plan. If we're going to recreate everything, then they probably need to get a consultant in here to go out and do a bunch of special meetings and things. Nothing we're going to do.
Chapter nine, this is not the one that you may all agree with, but it's one that is kind of important. Under background, history, first, first sentence, it says, the economy of Valley County has been dependent upon government, timber, mining, and agricultural. I, I don't know if that is the right term, because it's, when I read that, it goes like, well, we used to do these things.
Well, government is the forest service.
But it's still here.
Yeah.
And so my thought was change the word, instead it has been, is. The economy of Valley County is dependent upon government, timber, mining, agricultural, and recreation.
And construction.
I think.
Yeah.
Construction.
I think definitely recreation would be added. I thought we talked about this. Or maybe I just read your notes.
Maybe. Anyway, I thought it was to include maybe some of the other things.
This is just a background, this is just kind of the history. And then if you pop over to paragraph two, recreation tourism have become more influential to the local economy. Retail services, real estate. And then we go into, I mean, it's like you've progressed from history.
Real estate are now the top employment.
The economy of Valley County has been dependent upon government. It, it doesn't imply anything.
Has been and is currently, because all of those industries are still, still happening.
How long ago, I guess, kinda thinking through that sentence, how long ago do we think that tourism and recreation became influential in our local economy?
Well, you can look at the graph we provided.
So then.
Employment, would you please?
Employment by industry, right here.
The, the graph that I can't read?
I can read it just fine. I have twenty fifteen vision.
Because I think what we.
Because, okay, so look at farm. And it's down under the two hundred.
Were you, you're on the graph for, is that employment?
Employment by industry since two thousand. So the higher is.
That's what I wrote on mine. Charts, I can't make heads or tails out of it.
You wanna see it in a bar.
One of the things we always used to make my, my team do is put their legend in the same order as the graph.
Do the graph.
We, these are taken.
This is the US Department of Commerce that put this together.
So what is the, what are we trying? I'm looking at this in the book, and maybe the colors aren't printed quite, but what's the top one?
You can see here. The top one, what's the top one?
Where's recreation, I'm not seeing it, recreation or.
Uh, I don't see recreation.
Construction.
Construction is here, yeah.
It's a big one.
Construction is the yellow, the green.
There's arts, entertainment, recreation. That down toward the bottom. You got government, other accommodations, arts.
It didn't come out good in the print job, so what do you got there?
Oh, you're looking at a different graph, you're looking at earnings by industry.
Oh, I'm looking at employment by industry.
Looking at these.
Oh, that's, that's a table, we're looking at the graph.
Mine that, that shows the gray with the triangles is added new services.
Mm-hmm. Education.
Correct.
So that would be like. Government jobs.
And then the yellow, the yellow is construction.
Yeah.
The.
Lime green.
Lime green is.
Taken over.
So I would suggest.
It's either finance and insurance.
Yeah, you can't tell.
Management of companies, cause the greens are all messed up.
At a minimum.
Well, that dark green's at the bottom.
Sentence should align with the top five anyway in the graph.
Well, sell trade.
If that's what we're.
So if we can get this graph clearer.
Yeah.
I, I think it's really good information. It was put together, not by us, the US Department of Commerce, Bureau of Economic Analysis.
We got it from the Headwaters report, where I took the copy, pasted it from.
Are we trying to report too many categories in it?
We didn't do it, they did.
But I, I think.
No, like you say, this was a screen, this is basically a screenshot, that's why it's.
I just, I think it's very useful information, I just.
I'm just, I just want the sentence that we have to align with the information, the first sentence in that block in that chapter.
Okay.
I want that to align with. Whichever graph we think is most, is it earnings or influential employment?
Okay, so well, that's kind of a historical statement, Brad. The economy has been dependent on government timber, mining, and agriculture, we all agree, timber is, we're not very dependent on that anymore.
Nope.
With major segments of the economy being seasonal, the single most important fact about the economy is the economic patterns in a state of change. It's just setting up the thought that we're going from this ag, timber. Kind of thing into a more tourism, right.
Question, comment, if I'm not from this area and I read these, that sentence along with C. Which is a little bit further down, it sounds to me like, well, they used to farm that ground there, they don't anymore, and now it's all recreation.
But it has decreased and problems have been, I mean, it's true statements, Ken.
I do get that, absolutely, there's less employees in agriculture due to technology and modernization of equipment and stuff. We, we hire a third of the employees on our operation, but we farm three times as many acres. So what I'm trying to get at is, don't let our comp plan set the stage that agriculture is going away, because. If we're serious about maintaining ag in the county, which our comp plan calls for, then let's not present it like it's going away.
I don't read that.
Are you seeing it, that it's going away?
Page forty-five, C, or sixty-four of your PDF, C.
I don't know, you have the whole numbers.
I'm with you, Carrie.
Just a little more.
I don't know, my PDF is detailed on, on the side, it tells me, page numbers are what they are.
Oh, I, that's where I was, the economy of C.
On C.
And now they're talking about C.
Oh.
It looks like this. C.
So you're concerned that it's saying.
It's the, it kind of starts to tell a story that ag is going away.
I disagree.
But would you agree, agriculture, agricultural use in Valley County has decreased, right? I think that's all it's doing is minimally. Hundred and sixty-eight, hundred and thirty-three jobs. Yeah, and I don't know if jobs is the right measure.
I get that.
This is economic development, this is.
Oh, so this is about jobs.
This is, this is economic development.
About jobs.
You're also saying it's also about the, has the income of the farm changed and the in.
And if you go to the land use, there should be a graph in there on acreages.
So what, tell me what you would like, what's your recommendation? I think it's factual, I agree that it's factual, uh, as far as the job count goes, but that's, you think that's.
You're, you're referring to this table down here where it has said the net cash farm income has increased, the production hasn't, that's increased. The value has increased, the jobs have gone down, like in this table here.
People employed.
Yeah, the number of people employed has gone down, the number of farms. Number of farms have gone down.
Well, and I would think that this too is referring, I mean, when I think, I'm also thinking timber, I'm thinking logging, which since nineteen eighty has plummeted.
Right, but they're still viable industries. People are still making a living doing that here.
Yeah, logging's not as much anymore.
The number of employees.
Well, you don't need to look at the number of employees, you can look at the, look at the next table.
Just one here.
Yeah, that's why I don't see that it's telling a story that.
What would you like it, how would we modify that to make it more aligned with what you're thinking?
Well, I would, I put the has been and continues to be independent on government timber mining and agriculture, then when you get to paragraph two.
Okay.
Perfect.
Next. It says recreation tourism have become more influential.
Perfect.
Perfect, awesome, you guys, I, you, somebody's gonna address the spaghetti's graphs, right?
Well, if you can't make it look, we'll take it out, we'll find it.
I think they tell the story.
It, it's a great graph, it tells a lot, I mean, I could sit there and look at that for a long time and get a lot of information out of it.
You might try just turning it horizontally or.
Well, no, this is literally, this came, this page is a part of the Headwaters report. Exactly, so I don't have the numbers to create it or to grow it or anything.
Now there's the employment by industry and earnings by industry, what is government is the big industry.
Because of the forest service.
In most places.
Manufacturing.
Actually, probably not.
In the United States.
Government, because of the number.
Where are you going next, Ken?
Kind of the number of public lands we have in Idaho, we have very high. City, county, and federal employment compared to other seats, states.
And that's what these graphs show.
Yeah, it's, we're like doubling the national average.
Which also means you have income coming, income coming into the county from outside, jobs.
I mean, right now, mining is really low, but hang on, it's gonna go high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you looked at the job openings?
Where?
At Stibnight, are they advertising?
actual.
The, the contractor that's been hired is.
Okay, chapter eleven. Okay, this is, I think this is actually where I was going, that's, I'm clear up to chapter thirteen, I don't know why you got in line and.
Well, it's just so exciting, you know?
I'm, I'm, I'm on the last chapter.
Nobody else has even had a chance to start yet.
Land use, okay.
Okay.
Oh, this is a fun one.
Yeah, there's a couple of statements here. Send it in your agricultural lands, paragraph number five. Producers continuously face the following problems in Valley County, limited growing season, high acid conditions, high water tables, spring limits, uh, spring planting. Long winter feeding periods, occasional summer frost, therefore agricultural lands represent a future potential for subdivision and second home development. Agricultural lands are valued not only for production, but as open space. Those, it is true that we have a short growing season, and it is true that we have high acid soil conditions, and we have high water table. But there, it's not a problem to raise crops that are, uh, flourish in those conditions.
So do you wanna remove them?
But.
Remove that sentence?
Well, it says limit spring plantings, I, I recall people getting their tractors stuck in, in springtime.
We do that all the time, it's fun.
It's just a statement, it's, I did not write this.
Some, somebody wrote it. Tell me what you would modify, or what. I would get rid of this sentence that says, therefore agricultural lands represent a future potential for subdivision and second home development.
They do.
Not agricultural lands.
Unused.
The existing ones, that's those open fields that. We're not promoting it here, it's just.
All right, I think it does. I can see removing the sentence doesn't change the paragraph. Intent of the paragraph is still there. And then you might say that, uh, there are, something to the effect that there are. Short season crops that are viable in Valley County, something along those lines. You just have to figure out what they are.
Well, I don't think you need to list them, you could say it's tailored to these conditions, you know?
I was just gonna say there are short season crops that are viable.
Agriculture producers have adapted to these conditions and raise crops that fit the climate.
Right.
Who else farms beside you?
Dunkin's, Willie's, Mackey's.
Mackey Farms, what do they farm?
Uh, grain, egg.
I'm, I'm talking row crops, they also do row crops.
So they're tuning. Tunings do, I think they're gonna do more.
Well, they do chicken.
They do chickens, but they also do. Uh, it's, it's a grain type of product that. It's not root seed.
So tuning Roberts.
Uh, it's not canola, it's, yeah.
So the two?
Well, it depends on, if you just, we have an operation, but we run like six different places. And there's incredible opportunity. We've covered what we needed here.
Yeah, it was just, I'm, I'm just curious if someone else would do that, we used to have potato farms and everything else that, yeah. I don't know where they're.
Okay. Anything in fourteen?
Everybody see the work chart? I think is interesting information that tells people the size of Valley County government.
Land maps. I have some, I could definitely change how they look.
Which one do you want to change?
The purple, the block maps.
The future land.
I can't see it.
I gotta get to them up and see what is.
That's in land use, right, which is chapter.
That's these. We added the one to go north of McCall.
Oh, great.
We adjusted that, yeah.
That's not on this email that you sent then.
No, it's been adjusted since then.
This time from McCall.
It's been adjusted. And all the ideal stuff is in green.
I see it, oh, it's in green?
Yeah, it goes up even more.
That's ideal land.
I guess, I was looking at it.
That's the same one I'm looking at, really, you have.
And this is a, a new one.
That's the new one.
See the new one?
That's much more representative, yeah. It went too far in.
When she had done him, she'd cut it off.
Okay.
Where. Halfway up the lake, but.
So.
And then flip the, the south end of Valley County.
That's, um, you have to flip pages for that.
Yeah, if you keep going.
I, I was looking to.
No, that's all we did, we adjusted this, everything else is.
So the couple spots, and I'll start from the south end of the valley and work north.
Are we all on the last map then? Like.
Let me get there. Now, these are future land use maps.
Right.
And the header was long range growth types include agricultural, commercial, industrial, residential, and the scenic byway. Future land use should be directed to the appropriate vicinity, but this does not, does allow other types of uses. Is the header on the map? Yes, Miss Ferry.
Smiths Ferry, um, what, is there? Down on the south end of the, I'm, I'm up to Cascade, south end of Cascade Lake, down on the old Pat Allen property. As you go across the south end of the lake, there's all those open fields out there.
Down here, that's Carol McGregor's, right there, and this was Leslie's, and he just died, and he's left it to his four children.
I question that area south of the, what is it called, West Mountain Road.
You want that green ag?
I don't know, you, you live closer to that than any of us.
I mean, currently, it's.
Currently, it's all agricultural.
But future land use, I can see that end of the county being developed, I mean, I've talked to.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Coming to West Mountain.
West Mountain Road, well, where you go down south end of the lake, you're going.
Oh, yeah.
And it.
On the south side, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, it would.
I think a big chunk I just recently sold, right, I don't know.
Not that I'm aware of, anyway, I was watching, but the. My only thought there is, I thought that was very, very low water table.
High, high water.
High, high water table, yeah.
It would have to be.
High water table. That would be a tough development principle. Anyway, I just, I thought that that purple area should go back towards West Mountain Road. So between West Cabarton and Highway fifty-five. Between Cabarton and the mountain, so, right in this area, like, this area in here. You would change that to agricultural there? I think that makes sense. Okay, so that portion south.
Ag is south.
South of West Mountain Road, this area.
Uh, Carol McGregor's. That's. And all that, well, part of it's ag, the other stuff is already developed.
Right, that's on the other side of the road.
No, that's, and there's developed too. No, that's, and there's developed too. I'm looking, so I'll put a green blob right here. Be very, it'd be like that.
That portion south of West Mountain Road is not developed.
But this is split up here, if you're talking. It's once you get down here that it's, what size parcel is that? Six hundred and thirty-four acres, that's state.
That's all state.
So it's, who's L and J Livestock LLC? Out of Garden Valley.
Where's that at? I can't see it, sorry.
It's south of Cabarton and West Mountain.
Where? Oh, that's out on Cabarton.
But all of this is split.
Yeah, all that's.
Oh, this is Leslie's, so it's, but it's quite a bag.
Is this here?
Raspberry Ranch is L and J Land, oh, L and J Land and Livestock, Leslie.
Leslie Goldcham.
Acre sizes, yeah, they're still pretty big. I think that's fine.
But is, I mean, this, remember this is future land uses.
I'd just change it because you look at the development.
Development patterns is what we were looking at.
If you're looking, if this is future, this is likely going to push the, these directions.
I think it's fine to put it as, as residential for a future land use. I don't know, it's probably not a velvet, im- immediate development area, but.
Yeah.
That's not what we're talking about either, so.
Let's move along, that's one area, uh, the other one is up by Stonebreaker on the way to.
Other side, Little Donor.
Yeah, sure, well, it's out here. That area is all owned by the Bureau of Reclamation and/or our irrigation company. Everything, uh.
Just north of Crown Point?
Yes. Yeah.
North of Crown Point?
Yeah, so basically Pine Lakes Ranch north, north of Pine Lakes Ranch. All of that is, is gonna stay in ag.
There have been people that have purchased land off of Stonebreaker. Can't tell that. Who plan on developing it, I mean, they've already talked about.
Off of Stonebreaker?
Yeah, just those parcels north of Stonebreaker.
No, I'm glad.
Yeah, click on.
To the right, to the north of the intersection.
North.
Also to the south.
West of Stonebreaker and fifty-five.
Jones, Jones' property.
Pull that, pull that, that.
I see Gold Fork Irrigation has.
And they own a whole bunch of that land in there.
Yes, I know, I need to go back to the map.
Northwest.
Everything south of Stonebreaker is, it, the, the two parcels you're thinking of are north of Stonebreaker. But there, I mean, that's out in the middle of ag ground.
Got that, what, eleven acre piece that's for sale.
There's the guy that's got his RV out there and.
The shop.
Just built a shop.
And there's talk from the county about putting some sort of recreation type uses out there.
Parking lot?
Yeah.
For winter, still, yeah.
Who owns that?
Michael Heron.
You know, the north and west of.
Uh, Michael Heron.
Oh, he owns that one too, north of Stonebreaker?
Oh, no, C, C N, C N R, C C N R.
Yeah, and the one next to it.
C C N R.
I've talked to people about that. Not that I want any of it, but I'm just telling you that future land use, I mean.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna follow that concept, send to the whole valley as future residential, is that right? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think when people have purchased something for a use ten years ago and they don't, I don't know if they plan on maintaining agricultural there. I'm, I'm just saying, this is a future land use map. I've talked to people that want to put recreation uses out there. The county wants to put recreation uses down Stonebreaker. I mean, they are involved in a parking lot south of Stonebreaker with fishing game. It's a big deal right now.
What's the specific ask, Ken?
The specific, my, my ask is if, if, what's the purpose of this map? It says, it, it says future land uses. And so if we put this color on this.
We're changing the name of it.
Put the color on the map. And somebody's gonna say, oh, well, that's gonna be a subdivision someday.
So a future land use map.
So, or if it's not purple and it's green.
Last meeting.
Is it gonna stay in ag?
Future.
Might, that's, that would be our proposed that it stay in ag.
In communities.
So, so tell me what you're requesting is it changed?
Well.
Is that, is it the part of the purple north of Stonebreaker that you don't like?
The purple that is south of Stonebreaker needs to be green all the way down to Pine Lakes Ranch.
South of Stonebreaker?
Yep.
Oh, that dot right there.
So if you have the.
Cause there's Pine Lakes Ranch right there.
Can you show me what you're?
Well, I just, yeah, I drew it, but.
Cause you're a little bit into Pine Lake Ranch, okay.
This area here should be.
Should be agriculture?
Yes.
I don't, I'm not opposed to that, show, show everyone, see if they.
Is, is part of the conflict because of the, the color of the residential is very close to the Bureau of Rec color?
Well, that is kind of confusing.
Oh, yeah, that, that's fine, I mean, if the county wants to put a recreation area back there, they can.
There's about four hundred acres in here that's gonna stay in ag.
Okay.
And it should be green.
I'm fine with pulling that purple back just a little bit.
Yeah, cause at the top it still says future land use should be directed to the appropriate vicinity, but this does not disallow other types of uses.
And then, and then up south of Donley, on the old state road, you've got that ball purple between old state road and the highway.
That was part of a county commissioner, a decision when they approved McGregor out there. They anticipate that everything from Wagon Wheel north to Donley will.
Be residential.
Be a residential use because that's where the sewers.
That's the most productive ag ground in Valley County. And it's, it is going to stay in ag as long as we have anything to do with it.
Okay, so you want?
Everything from the.
Let me see your picture, Ken.
Well, I just drew the area, but it's from the old railroad grade.
East?
East.
To Loomis?
We already have some CUPs for other uses in there. But we can.
CUPs for what?
The storage units.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking up to south Barker, south of Barker.
Oh, I thought Barker was gone too.
Down to Loomis, there's a mile there.
Okay.
The old state.
The south of Barker.
South of Barker.
Over to the.
South of Barker and east of the railroad, east of railroad.
And then east of, is that, may I see that on the map again, is that where?
Let me show you.
All those people live?
Which people?
We're on village?
No.
So Barker, uh, over to the railroad, down to Loomis, and then even take McGregor out of it. Everything east of the old highway.
So, but there's that piece, I guess we can face it when it comes, that's already been half-developed north of Loomis on the highway.
Yeah.
You'll come up with an aerial, yeah.
That's the one that we looked at.
Knife River, yeah, yeah.
That's the thirty-two duplexes.
That's out in the middle of ag ground.
Well, it's not ag, it's not an ag use.
Could be.
It's got infrastructure and everything else in it. We previously approved it as a, uh, multi-family complex and they got halfway through and then two thousand eight hit. It was our only zombie.
Is it currently being?
Well, two zombies, huh?
Is it currently being farmed?
No.
It's still got infrastructure in it.
It has residential infrastructure.
Yep.
I think that's where we would encourage people to put stuff in. Have infrastructure near the municipality.
It's not in, it does not have infrastructure. And it's been stated that it's too expensive to get into it.
They're not gonna, whoever owns it.
Nobody's gonna go out there and knock that up.
If somebody comes in with a condition lease permit.
North of, north of Loomis, right off the highway. It's where they proposed the asphalt plant.
So, right there.
Oh.
Zoom in. Right there.
Oh, here.
I'm just saying.
Oh, I know, right, I remember with Knife River, doesn't Knife River still own it? Yeah.
What I'm trying to tell you is that.
Well, I'm here.
They sell, yeah, I know.
They sold it.
And then the pieces to the west, those are selling also.
Or did they buy it from someone else?
Did you guys buy that?
To the west?
Tad Ellison. Needles View Ranch.
Another farmer bought it.
I don't know.
Down it, uh, we run it, we farm. Everything around that area is.
Where else we can?
Okay, go north up on the west.
What's, do you guys want that completely green through there where that development is or?
I think we're gonna have to piecemeal it in that area.
But if this is brought, I mean, unless we're gonna get into a true zoning map or we draw hard lines, this is spray painted.
Right, this is, so.
Paintbrushes.
Correct.
I'm gonna go north to.
There's gonna be as, as many exceptions to this map as we have.
Who's Needles View?
It's directional.
It's, we're headed there.
Yeah, I think we will, I agree.
The zoning map?
I think eventually you'll end up with a zoning map because it's, we're gonna get to it, we have one sometime.
But not right now, not this minute.
It wouldn't surprise me, at some point it's coming, but.
Oh, yeah, but let's hire a consultant to go out and do that. We've been trying to update this comp plan for four years.
Can we move this along quickly? Uh, the ground that's over, uh, off of, um, Farm to Market Road, north of Spink.
We're on the McCall map now, Lake Fork, uh, yeah.
North of Spink?
All of that's ag, that's all residential, except for Dunkins.
Approved that, not just, I shouldn't say, actually, maybe I wasn't even on the commission.
I think you were.
That was approved.
Where?
I don't know what address that was. Yeah, maybe I wasn't on the.
I'm talking, I'm talking, uh, excuse me, east of Farm to Market.
Oh, east.
East of Farm to Market. From north, from Spink north, so that's the Dunkins, the Willie's, uh, those ranches that are all up in there. Clear up to the Finn Church area. I don't know who owns the ground north of Finn Church.
You would carry it, there's, it's.
Oh, that's all been.
The stuff south of Finn Church is sold out. Willie's have done subdivisions in their stuff.
North of Finn Church too is developed now, cause there's about six houses that have just gone in it in the last like two years.
You can bring them up there.
But what I, my point is there is productive agricultural and has been for a hundred plus years and it's still going that way. And the next generations are coming up and you've got it painted purple and it's still an active ag ground.
I'll change that to green right there.
Where's the Kerry?
Kerry's our jug.
Jug mountain, some stuff like.
It's north of this section.
It's north.
North of Finn, north of Finn Church.
Ashton Lane.
So I, I would agree that that area that they.
Yeah, north of Finn Church is.
Okay, turn on your subdivision thing over here.
It is.
So there's Finn Church.
That, yeah, so this is, I think, what's being developed right now.
There's Spink, all of this is developed in here, all of this is developed through here. So there's just a little bit there that isn't developed.
Who owns Sperry Place LLC? The Dunkins are right off of Farm to Market.
But there again, the Dunkins and the Willie's farm multiple places there that could be these other areas.
By Willie's here.
Okay.
So make your proposal again.
Tell us what you want, yeah.
South of, of Finn Church.
Or north of Spink.
North of Spink, so I think they'll take the green all the way up to Finn Church and then.
There's so much developed south of Finn Church.
There is.
That's all that, Mary, Mary Hartz lived out there for forty years.
There's this area, Ken, that's quite open, I think this is the Dunkins, but all of this is already split.
Yeah, but it's still in ag production, even though there's houses around it.
But the map is not for current, it's for projected future.
So we'll put the Dunkins, well, north of Spink, the Dunkins up to where the development stops.
Yeah, east side, yeah.
Okay, right there.
Where you have it.
Okay.
Yeah, do that very east side, but it also gives us a little margin to the.
Three other spots to discuss.
Urban interface areas well, where we're not necessarily encouraging growth, I don't wanna miss that.
Yeah, when people open this, they'll see, oh, well, okay.
Does that make sense?
It's south of Elo, that's where my house is.
In the big wide open pastures that used to be Ruska's.
That's all in twenties and their, people are living in there on those twenties.
This whole flat area?
Yeah.
Okay, so disregard that one. Uh, Heinrich Lane.
So we're headed south, south of.
Uh, the west side of the highway.
Yeah, west side of the highway, Heinrich Lane area.
Mackey goes all the way up there, president.
Lawrence's are up there.
Doesn't Mackey go up there?
No.
Simplot owns quite a bit.
Simplot's got a huge chunk out there. I'm just, what, I there's probably some of that that should be readdressed. And then the other spot is, I'm not sure what you're thinking about on the West Mountain Road section from basically the, where the home business road runs off north or up to, what do I want to say?
Walcock on the.
Well, up to where we just had the application last two weeks ago for Alquist.
Oh, yeah, so it's your, up to.
So there's those.
Lake.
Yeah.
You got those, those.
Nineties out, that's all residential, there's a subdivision approved on the west side of West Mountain, south of Solans gravel pit.
Proposed?
Approved.
Approved, well.
So.
That's, it's south of Solans, but like where the, the brand new pivots are, that along the road, you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Escocas.
Um, that, south, clear down to.
Everything owned by the bank?
Well, Dennett Ranch, so from, north from Dennett Ranch.
And Bettis' have a bunch in there too.
North of Dennett Ranch to kind of south of, um, where Smiley comes across.
At the bridge?
Yeah.
I just, there's, a lot of that out there is just wide open ranching space today.
Right, but we're looking at the future, um, that, a lot of that was retained by a bank.
Not sure, still curious about that.
By the bank owns that.
A bank has still, we wanted to, we made an offer, you would think a bank would not be in the market.
Yeah, I, some people, I've heard from bankers that banks aren't supposed to own land.
Right.
Anyway, there's.
Maybe we can make a green thing out there.
Some green out there.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point, those are big tracts.
Yeah.
Yep. What is that bank?
The elevens.
The elevens, yep. It used to be the Twin Creek Ranch out there.
Okay. Um, the other thing that, you, I see you have a yellow on here for commercial between Lake Fork and McCall. Do we wanna take any steps within this comp plan process to take a step forward on actually designating that as a commercial area?
That mean we're zoning it?
Well, this is a future land use, when you do that, when you, and I'm just saying, when you, if you're, if we're wanting to zone that commercial, we lose our control.
Cause we don't have design guidelines.
Correct, right. It won't be coming in for individual CUPs. It's almost developed.
I, I just raised a question, I, to me, if I'm a, a young entrepreneur and I wanna come into Valley County and start business, I wanna know where I can locate. And if there was something that the land use governing agency said, this is a prime spot for you to go for your new business, And if there was something that the land use governing agency said, this is a prime spot for you to go for your new business. I would say, oh, okay, that's where I'm gonna go look for property.
I think we're indicating that in this map without.
Yeah.
Calling it zoning, but. So it goes to that point. We're just not calling it zoning.
I mean, we almost just denied one.
We don't have one.
It's still on the table. There's one that you guys have recently heard.
Coming back.
Yeah.
So we can't talk about that one that.
It's in that area.
And that's other factors, anyway.
Which would be removed if we zoned it commercial.
Well, it's, yeah, it's already got, we can't talk about that right now. Um, okay, um.
Don't worry, everybody, I'll retire, so.
What did she say?
I said, don't worry, I'll retire.
I'll retire.
I'll forget all of it.
On page seventy-four, might be a typo. Um, is the intent, it says beginning in twenty twenty-five.
Oh, I got you.
Or less than. Should that read beginning in twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
You didn't catch.
What is meant on, uh, goal number one, this is on chapter thirteen. Goal number one, number two. Uh, A, where it says, and this is under the section about discouraged, scattered, sprawling.
Yeah, I'm not with you.
What chapter? Chapter thirteen.
Thirteen, number one.
Seventy-nine.
Sorry, seventy-nine, I think.
Well, what, like, what section?
Uh, goal one, objective. Man used to.
Yeah.
Litter. Discouraged, scattered, sprawling.
Haphazard suburban development by, and then it says controlling suburban development on open foothills. What does that mean?
Where did that even come from? Do we even have foothills?
And I'm thinking foothills as.
That's the only where all the houses are. And it's all developed. So send it this.
Find us as foothills.
Is this like, uh, like over in, uh, like the Elb ones that we just had in Simco?
And it doesn't say prohibiting, it says controlling.
Well, isn't this where the old plan wanted you to go in the timber? The new plan doesn't want you to be in the timber.
Or maybe the next plan does want us to be in the timber.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
I've just, I raised the question about what does this mean? And of course, I also have my note about requiring central.
Well, this one could be applied if there was a subdivision proposed in the view shed of West Mountain. We could say. These are dark sky compliant ordinances don't fill out, build out on the tip of the point. I mean, it's a view shed type of thing, I believe. We can remove it.
It is almost contradictory now with the. I would almost prefer to see something about, in there about the, maybe it's in one of the other sections, but the wildlife urban interface.
We could remove A. I should forward you guys all the stuff we've been getting from Fish and Game. You wanna remove three A?
I think so.
Yeah.
So it's kind of contradictory to the.
If I, if I can't tell you what it means and why it's there, it should go away. I can't explain.
Probably put in there by Carla, I would say Carla, nineteen ninety-seven.
Thank you, Carla.
She's still alive.
Your memory lives on. Until we deleted it today.
That's right. Now it's, she got like two thirds of the way through it and decided she was tired of hanging out in Valley County.
And then on the la, I think the, almost the last thing I have here is, um, under goal two. Uh, it says increase the economic value of privately owned land in Valley County. And then under the objectives, it talks about increased production of land consistent with BMPs. Um, talks about better crops, forestry. Um, is this section focused on ag land or is it on all land?
All lands. Privately owned lands.
Okay. All right. And then I have one that I, it's the last one that I have. Uh, under goal three, develop a policy of cleanup and fix-up. Uh, number four, it says encourage the removal of diseased and dying trees. And this is my point, you all get this. We'll drive down Highway fifty-five. And along Highway fifty-five, there's these dead and dying trees old by Clear Creek. That, that today, there's another one that looks like within a week, it's gonna be on the highway. Can we require the removal of diseased and dying trees that are at risk of falling on public roads and right-ofways?
No, it's state.
The encourage, is it in state?
You're talking about along the highway.
On the highway.
It's on private or state?
Both, both. If it's a public road and there's a dead and dying tree.
Valley County, we go down and remove them. If someone wants to remove one from.
If it's on their private land.
On private land, this is where we encourage it. We would have to create an ordinance that says you will remove dead dying trees on your land. And then we would have to figure out who's going to enforce it and who's going to prosecute it.
And you, it'd have to.
And who's going to.
Over that because dying trees provide a wildlife habitat.
It's not all dead and dying trees. I think it's only if it can fall on a public roadway.
What I'm after is health and safety, protection of the people that live here. And it bothers me that a landowner has that on their property and they know darn well it's gonna end up on the state highway.
Which one is it?
Which one?
Which, down here by Clear Creek.
Oh, it's south of, um, Cabart.
Ones with the wedding venue that keep having weddings, um, even though we denied their conditional use permit.
That's south of Summer.
And I think we brought, at least I think I brought it up during that hearing. But the other place that they actually did something about it was up there just across the highway from the, um, nursery.
Program Alpha?
The Alpha Nursery.
Redmond's.
Yeah, there were those big cottonwood trees and there were, a couple of them fell down. Somebody went in there and cleaned them up, most of them, but.
If you say require, then you're definitely gonna get the lawyers involved. If something does happen, even if a tree looked healthy. It falls.
There's so much speculation.
It diseased.
I think it ha, yeah, we have, we have to encourage that. I think that our states and county do a better job. I mean, that's a serious issue along the state highway.
We've had a relative of one of our families that live here got killed.
Yeah. Well, and I think, off topic, but the greater need is what is, it. What's impacting, why are we now having this? What's being put on the road that's different?
Oh, it's the salt, magnesium chloride.
Magnesium chloride.
And that's salt.
Right.
Right.
But this wasn't happening over history. It's a newer issue.
What calls Christmas trees dying?
Oh. There's too many dogs pee on it.
It, maybe it's, maybe it's when we have a, at least when we have, we can have the encourage, but if we have somebody that comes in for a CUP of any sort. I think we ought to absolutely require it as a condition of approval that they clean up dead and dying trees. And it's not just for falling on roads, it's for fire. Risk, and that's probably the very one.
Well, and I think that's too part of like a subdivision, you know, like within our subdivision, like. Every person has to agree to fire wise, to mitigating any down brush, blah, blah, blah. Like, we have that in our, not just like in our wooey, that's in our CCN branch.
So the plan says what we want it to say, but we have a downstream action as we go through our.
Ordinances.
Ordinances. Wait, do you even need to make it an ordinance or is it just something that we need to.
You're making a condition of it.
Condition of approval.
And it's site specific. You wouldn't wanna say, I have to remove your dying trees if they don't even have trees on their property. So. I'd like to take the next four minutes.
Four minutes.
Thanks, Ken. Everybody else didn't get to their stuff. Just give me your changes if anybody.
Ours were just.
Right.
Clerical.
I saw that's the one that was remaining. Sorry.
So.
I do thank you guys for the discussion.
I had given you a copy. It's chapter four permitted uses. This is things I'm writing to implement this plan. And the two major things I'm focusing on at this time is the water quality and wildfire. Um, and this is under the permitted use section, so it applies to any new development, not just conditional uses. Read through here, see if you see the things that don't make sense. And then I'm gonna get our county engineer involved. Uh, to put in some specific standards.
And you emailed this already too.
I didn't get that spear email.
I did.
Oh.
Last night?
I didn't.
Cuckoo.
I didn't get it.
I thought I got this via email.
I don't think so. You might have. Maybe I sent you one of those. Look at this.
Yeah.
Um, and then, but if you're just gonna AI stuff, um.
Well, actually, while we were waiting for Commissioner May, but I read everything.
Okay, so here's another one, yes, that I have not put into words. These are thoughts. And this is on the wildland urban interface overlay. And there's some things, we, I don't believe we'll be adopting this in its entirety, but there are some things in here that I think that we should include. And we did have a meeting, Omara, myself, the fire departments with the board of county commissioners last January, I think. And. There are some things we do want to get in now, such as driveways need to be approved by the fire department. Because they're running into things where they can't get to the houses.
Doesn't it say that?
The, it's a matter of interpretation. It's entitled six.
I guess it's just for a subdivision.
Yeah.
But not for like a building permit.
Right, so the fire department really wants involvement for individual building sites. They wanna be able to make sure that they can get there.
And address.
But we still need it into code. Um. I have a bunch of notes. Um, that was one of, um, um, and then just things that we can do like hardscaping. Thirty feet around your house if you're in the wildland. Well, the goal is, I don't know if we can do it right now. We want to do wildfire zones and in certain zones, you have to implement this or this or this. And it's gonna be more controversial. So that is not something I'm trying to do right now before October. I want to do those simple things like driveways. Um, and maybe some change in building materials with the change in the soffits and stuff. With wildfire resistant material.
The, I'm just flipping through here, but I saw setbacks changing from high water.
Yeah.
Yep, recalls us.
Oh, from thirty.
Thirty to fifty.
That we went to zero setback.
Yeah.
Zero, I like. Wait a minute.
Ready to.
She wants that.
There's a red number and a not a red number, so now, now I got it.
Some people think we're going there.
And then does, could you, uh, include some of the soil, water conservation's recommendations?
I've read through their stuff. I'm not gonna put, um, their specific engineering requirements that I can't understand their calculations and all the engineering. That has to be. That's why I'm going to include our engineer.
And they had some on, uh, I know they had some on no egg zones.
Yes.
Not the land use.
Yeah.
We're not doing land use.
That's in our.
But does that become an ordinance though?
We are, I am not writing, we don't ordinances in the land use title.
So it has to be in a different title?
That's, uh, title five, I think, or. It's one of, it's a different title.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with planning and zoning.
Okay. They had some other things, I think, that were on.
Well, they went with the three hundred foot area because our floodplain, within three hundred feet of, of floodplain in the Valley County ordinance. We require that you build two feet above that base flood elevation. So one, you know, years ago when I was talking to Leonard, it's like, well, I don't wanna go three hundred feet here, a hundred and fifty feet here, fifty feet here. But I'm willing to keep that three hundred feet separate and then have a hundred and fifty foot repairing area. Which is kind of emulating what McCall does with their shoreline environ zone. We're just gonna have a repairing area.
Between your residence, your waterway.
Between the high water line, a hundred and fifty feet back, and you're gonna have special considerations. Like, um, on certain sites, you'll probably have engineering for stormwater management.
Yeah, I mean, it's like a bio swale.
Yeah, and there's a twenty-five foot vegetative, um, setback. But there's gonna have to be an exemption for those lots that were planted prior to adoption of the ordinance where you don't take away their entire building right.
Right.
And is there an elevation exception or as well?
No. No, you have to be two feet above the base flood elevation. That's floodplain.
Cases.
For any new construction.
Okay.
All cases. First floor, including duck, burr, mechanical, anything like that. That's a hardcore, we're not messing with that.
And that, that's anywhere in the valley.
That's from a floodplain.
From a floodplain. Okay.
A flood insurance rate mapped floodplain. And we don't allow any development in a floodway. We don't have any floodways or whatever. Um, I'm getting warmed up for my conference.
Really do love your floodplain stuff.
Like you know it. Once I get warmed up.
Clicking that.
Hold me back.
Show us on the screen.
Hold me back for floodplain stuff. Um, so, yeah, kind of read through it, think, think about it.
And then you're, you'll draft up other ordinance changes to reflect the changes in the comp.
Not all of them, Ken. Not all of them right now. But most of them. I mean, I don't think we're gonna get to the zones on the fire. I think we're gonna have to take that piece and do some special considerations for that.
For the fire.
Fire zones.
Fire zones.
So there's a, I mean, everything that we're recommending or. Encouraging or desiring in the comp plan is not going to be implemented right now. That's our goals and objectives and things to do.
But we can work on them, say this winter sometime.
Yes. Yeah, that's my, my goal is to get these absolutely imperative things, water quality and some small firewise stuff done. And I'm going to incorporate the county engineer and make sure that we're not deviating from Valley County's adopted standards. For BMPs and DEQ, um, stuff.
Hi, Captain.
Been a busy couple of weeks.
It's been a busy couple of weeks.
Couple of decades, going strong.
Our meeting for September.
Eleventh.
Eleventh is.
Next Thursday.
Thursday.
Sunday.
It's got a lot of items.
Not. Two weeks. I was gonna say.
We don't have our staff reports done and I'm busy next week. We don't have our staff reports done, and I'm busy the next week.
It's got a lot of items, but. Lot of repeat.
And then the October one is a week out.
Sixteenth.
And then we plan, and here, to wrap up the comp plan, these li- these minor ordinance changes. Is we would like to get noticed for a public hearing October twenty-third.
I have it on my calendar.
That's what we had decided.
Four P M time on.
Oh.
And then people.
Four, I have it at six.
October twenty-third. Let's do four P M. That'll give us a lot more time. And then that would, and then. It would be a recommendation to the board.
Okay.
So.
But that's a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we will plan on getting all of these changes incorporated between now and. The second week of September, when we'll have to send the notices out.
Great.
Twenty-third, what time of day?
Four, let's do four. That'll give you lots of time.
Maybe back the night before, so.
So much chatting.
No, it's a public hearing, it's not a bunch of chatting.
That's true.
You guys are listening to the. The hearing, and then you make your recommendation.
Great.
Choose carefully, I have five open days left in October already.
It's twenty-three.
Busier now than you were.
Was twenty-third fine?
Yeah, it happened to be one of them.
What is going on the thirtieth?
Why, what are we doing the thirtieth?
I will be in Wilmington, North Carolina.
It's all Hallows Eve.
Let's see, hold on. The twenty-third. Who are you going there?
The twenty-fourth.
When are you going where?
Okay, so the twenty-third, so.
Twenty-third is good for me right now, I'm not moving it.
We're not moving that one, let's see, so if we did.
What's the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Well, I was just looking for if you guys have massive, do you think if you're gonna have massive changes, we're gonna have to have it.
Session, I could do, I can call in. On the thirtieth, if we need to.
I don't really anticipate it.
But if, if we had a massive change.
If you had little changes, I mean, we could take care of that and get it to the board.
So I think, this is my opinion, I think today we covered the big topics. So it would be unless the public brings up some very strong.
Well, there will be.
No, no, but that we feel is significant to make a significant change.
I don't anticipate it.
I just don't have a history with them, so I.
There will be people here that.
Yeah.
Strong opinion.
Sure, strong opinions opposed.
I could do Thursday.
Or in favor.
Thirtieth, later in the day.
I can do the thirtieth.
I don't anticipate it.
Doesn't, doesn't matter at all.
I mean, cause if there's some small changes, wording, little changes, we can get that done and then get it to the board. We'll have to have it by the end of.
What time on the twenty-third?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Thanks.
Said I'll make, I haven't re- always reserve.
I even said, we'd already decided on four, it was already on my phone.
Yeah, it was in the minutes from the previous meeting.
Oh, I had it at six.
You and Brad.
Don't be comparing.
Don't get confused. Sorry, that was the plan.
Have we adjourned?
Yeah, anything else?
No, I just wanna tell you my game plan here. And, and I'll be gone for two weeks.
I have a question.